So Danielle, floor is yours.
So the first thing I did this morning when I came down to the counties myself, I'm paying my taxes for last year 2022. And I'm kind of curious getting for those tax dollars that I'm paying. Kind of curious, I'm gonna get a refund because I'm getting less and less services from the tax dollars that I pay. Had a little issue, obviously in November, we had some bad weather. And as you're all probably aware, both of my residences are moved off of the farm at this point. And my daughters have come down weekly from November until I came last week and discovered that the county road, the actual gravel road, has not been bladed. No access to the property. There are still rain bins there that people need to access. There's still storage there, garage there, stuff that needs to be accessed. So last week when I came down to take care of some other business, I called the shop, the county shop, for three hours, over three hours, I believe it was. I ran into Commissioner Everly in town and we visited. I was actually just looking up my, not my, but the county shop phone number. And I called it from about noon until, I wanna say I called Marlis finally around 3:00 or 3:30 that afternoon to find out why nobody's answering the phone. Obviously, it gets forwarded to a cell phone, that again, nobody was answering. Marlis in turn gave me Skylar's phone number. Got ahold of Skylar, had a fairly heated conversation with him. And during that conversation, I was informed, in not so many words, that my stuff is not important and it may be till spring, till it gets opened. Pretty sure I'm still paying the same amount of taxes as everybody else, especially since we lived there in 2022. After, again, some heated words being exchanged, I did finally insult him. And he hung up on me, and I don't have a problem, that I would've done the same thing. But that was after being told again, in not so many words, that my property, because I do not live there full-time, is not important. That that gravel road, which is a county gravel road, not a section line, is not important. And we'll get to it when we get to it. So I in turn called every one of you. Three of you, well Gary actually answered the phone when I called. And I was very honest with each of you that I did talk to and told you that yes, I insulted him, he hung up on me. That was after some heated conversation. Two of you returned your phone calls and two of you didn't bother. Whether or not I'm in your district or not, we can have open voting now. Everybody can vote for anybody. The fact that two of you didn't return phone calls is a little disturbing. Gary at least was polite enough about it to say, you know, we're short blade operators and whatnot. Well, that would've made a lot of sense if the head of the department would've started with, "We're doing the best we can, we're short blade operators, sorry." There is zero customer service when it comes to the person you have chose to run this county. The most important part of the county at that are roads. So I'm a little disturbed that any taxpayer, whether it's me or anybody else, would be treated this way by somebody you have chosen and who's been on probation for almost a year now, just shy of a year. Okay? If we're so short on blade operators, he's a blade operator. He was a blade operator in Burley County. An insubordinate one, but he was a blade operator. He should be out there as the head of the department. As the manager and the owner of a business, you're the first line to get things done, okay? John is an operator, he should be out there working then. If you're that short of people, all these qualified people should be out there trying to get everything caught up. So I'm curious how much of my tax dollars I'm gonna get back since I'm no longer getting the services I'm paying for.
Jesse, you have those pictures I need to match you?
Oh, those pictures you emailed me?
I know, after calling, it was bladed on Friday. Because again, my daughter came down. And I'm also curious...
So that's the end of the drive, that's the end, that's right going into her property. We put that sign that we did when people were really driving past there, let them know that it is?
That's to the north, correct?
That's to the north, yeah.
Yeah, that's just two feet.
Where's your entrance? Just to the south?
Right, maybe 50, 75 feet, maybe to the south of that, right there, yeah, yeah, that's my road.
That goes east into the yard.
That my approach is to the yard.
This is the north, south.
This is north and south.
14th.
Like very jangle, right?
Yep.
Yeah, just past there, yeah, yeah.
And then that's coming right off the highway there.
So not a lot of work to do.
And in the past, even when we didn't live out there, it was done within, and I've never asked. And you guys know that I've never asked for a priority by any means. But it's always been open within seven, 10, maybe 10 days, so we always had access. And I'm also kind of curious when the county decided to start going on private property without permission. Because last year I was approached and my crop land, a mile to the east of this road on 15th Avenue, southeast on the way to like Gerard Jacobs and Henry Rourke and all them. I was approached last year if the blade could go in and make some windrows to help keep drifting from the gravel road. And I didn't have a problem with it then. They didn't ask me this year, but they're out on my property doing it. I don't care that they do it, I really don't. I like to know when somebody's on my property though, it's a courtesy.
My feeling.
And yeah, and that's why I like to know.
Typically, they ask.
I don't care that they were there, it doesn't bother me. But the fact that nobody could make a phone call, every one of you guys have my number, Marlis has my number. There are county workers out there that have my number, it's not like you can't find me.
But I think we solved the missing case of why nobody answered your phone call then. Because I can tell you, I didn't answer it because, I mean...
Because you know it was me, I know.
Well, you just described it, you contacted our road supervisor, had a heated discussion with him, insulted him, and then he hung up the phone. So I don't know why you're surprised that some people don't wanna answer your phone calls.
Oh, I'm not surprised.
That seems like it.
No, I'm not surprised at all.
I can tell you a few things. Skylar has been the Hazleton Blade Man since David Crumb resigned. I mean, Skylar's been in the blade, I don't know, however many days it took to blade the Hazleton route. So he has been in the blade, operating the blade. So we had pretty much everybody all hands on deck during, basically from December 19th or 17th all the way up to about New Year. So that's what it took to basically get all these roads open amongst wind events and everything else. We were all here, we all seen it. So yeah, a road where there isn't a residence is probably gonna be last. It's not a school bus route, it's not a mail route, it's probably gonna be the last round.
And I don't respect it.
Well, it kinda seems like you do. I mean, you're riding in here and insulting everybody.
This has been three weeks.
That's right, and it may be even more than three weeks because these guys are out. We had declared a snow emergency. We are showing that, well, that's because it needed to be done. We are in an emergency, that's why we declared. These guys are working hard, we got everybody going, they worked Christmas Eve, they only dated...
It's Christmas Day.
Because it was blowing 50 miles an hour and it was unproductive. We've been through this conversation with everybody. I mean, you know, and you talk about tax dollars, but you live in Bismarck, correct?
I still pay taxes down there.
That's right, that's right. But you left your house in Bismarck and someone moved the snow in the city of Bismarck. And then you came down, I'm assuming either interstate, Highway 10 or Highway 83 down to Linton, and someone moved the snow there. And then someone moved the snow out on your county road and inside the city of Linton and in the county roads there. So if you haven't moved any of the snow, but yet you got to come down here all the way to the courthouse without shoveling any snow, I guess the only thing to do is to pay the bills. So when you ask about what you get paid for your tax dollars, did you have to shovel your way all the way down here? No, I think the big issue here is you do have a major lack of gratitude for the work that these folks are doing here. They're working hard, everybody's working hard out here.
I understand that.
These guys are, and we are doing the best we can to maintain major routes. People that had emergencies, Ken Electric was calling, MDU was calling, South Central Region of Water calls. We have ambulances that have to get out places, sheriff's departments. These guys get turned around, they're on their way somewhere, and they get a phone call and they have to go somewhere else. It's a tough process managing during a storm system.
I understand that.
It may be weeks until you access your property sometime, that's just the long and short of it. And you contacted a guy in the middle of a major event who's managing employees, I don't know how many dozens of phone calls, because I get a pile of them and Skylar gets more than I do. He's probably gonna be a little short with you, especially if you insult him.
Um, he was shortly long before I insulted him.
Well, this isn't the first time you've ever called neither, so you can't expect to just have the hi-ho ring every time.
I absolutely do not.
Well, I think it's unfair of you to expect that kind of service.
I do.
Out in the country that we're probably stranded for three to four days, people that are moving their own snow to get in and out of places. I really, this is honestly, this is disrespectful what you're asking for, to be honest, because I think...
Do you have access within a lawn?
Yes, for a residence you don't need, for a place you don't really need to get to just to throw out there and try and pick a fight?
No.
I think so, I think it's ridiculous.
I think it's ridiculous if that's what you're accusing me of. I have sat here very respectfully and admitted everything.
That's right, you admitted everything, so how am I accusing you of anything?
You are twisting things, just like you like to do in that position.
Yeah?
Yeah.
We have pictures of your road open, you have access.
Yeah, they got open on Friday, I know that, because my daughter came down and checked it for me because she wanted to get out there.
After the elderly folks and the residents and the people that live here got opened up, they went to the roads of people that needed probably get hay or grain or maybe check out a property that's not their debt. That's right, that's exactly what happened.
I would put money on the fact that had I not called, it would still be undone.
I doubt that very much, because these guys have a road, they have a route, they know the roads that need to get open, and they get to them when they get to them. And then they get turned around, because commissioners like me and these guys call them and go, hey, this person needs the ambulance ride, this person's power's out, there's power lines down in the middle of nowhere. I had a call from MDU when Hazleton was out of power. They couldn't get in the ditches to the poles and asked if they could have services. I told them, you can have any blade you want to get power to the city of Hazleton. We had elderly folks without power, everything. These guys are on call, they're moving around. We go out and help out rural water so they can get water to, what, two-thirds of the county. It's a big responsibility and they have a lot going on.
I absolutely understand that. And again, I don't expect to be a priority by any means, I never have. But I do expect something reasonable and I do expect whoever I'm talking to to be remotely respectful and not treat me like my stuff does not matter.
You mean not treat you the way you treat them?
Um, no, I treat somebody the way they treat me. So you wanna get snotty with me, I can get snotty with you. That's how this works.
And this is why I didn't return your phone call, because I knew this is where it's gonna go. We are in the middle of an emergency, we were struggling, we are talking about bringing contractors and dozers in, we are interviewing to fill the vacancies we have, we're working.
You know about these vacancies months and months and months ago.
That's right, and we had to post them for weeks and now we have to conduct interviews. It's a timely process, this isn't a private business where you just go out and offer people jobs on the street. That's not how it works.
I am aware of that.
So...
But the reason I came was to...
Complain?
No, not complain, I want you to all be aware...
We're aware.
Of what, what is going on.
Yeah, we are aware. We're aware that these guys are working their butts off and we're trying to get more guys in, we're trying to get more contractors in, they're doing the best they can. And I feel like for the weather and the response and judging by from the other counties I've been talking to, we did as good or better than just about anybody else.
And I never said you're not. But the fact that the person that you have running the most important area treats people like garbage, it's kind of unacceptable. Again, you get treated the way you treat others. Because like I said, I would've probably hung up on me too, after, at that point. But it took some time to get to that point. I'm not complaining that he hung up, yet I'm not happy that it got to that point. I have never been disrespectful to anybody on this commission or anybody. Even since, smirk all you want, it doesn't matter, I've never been disrespectful to anybody.
That's fair.
I treated everybody as equals until they treat me otherwise. So that's, that's why I came here to say, I'm not complaining. I am asking specifically what I'm getting for my money. And again, I don't wanna be a priority, my stuff can wait. But when I do call and ask because I do need access or whatnot, I definitely don't expect to be treated the way I was treated.
Well, maybe Danielle, maybe, you know, maybe they didn't know, maybe they thought, oh, there's no way of living out there, we probably don't have to open that road, maybe you could've just asked?
I tried.
I'm not, you know, I'm not...
Yeah, that's literally what I tried to do.
I'm not criticizing it, just saying, you know, well...
I tried and I even, I even told Skylar on the phone. I said, I know you're not from here and you don't live here and you don't know the past protocols, but even when we didn't live on the farm, seven to 10 days or so, it was, it was accessible again.
Yeah, but maybe, maybe they didn't think, well, there's no house out there, maybe there's no need to go out there. But if you wanted me to go out there, you probably just could've said, no, I need to get out there.
I tried.
Excuse me, Chair, do you wanna give Skylar a chance to represent himself?
I'll give Skylar another chance once Danielle's finished, when Skylar has a chance.
I still have a lot to say.
I guess in the near future, the only thing is to try and call ahead of time, say, hey, a couple of weeks or whatever, you know?
Right, and you know, and, and as I told Skylar and everybody else, my daughters had come down here for, every week for weeks prior to this, didn't have access and told me. I didn't wanna call because I didn't know if what they were seeing was truly a road that wasn't bladed or if it was just deep. I didn't know, and so that's why I waited until I came firsthand.
Sure, but nobody really needed access either, obviously, they were just looking.
And that's fair. This conversation could've been completely avoided had, again, Skylar's been proper about it and said, hey, we're down, we're doing the best we can, rather than imply that my stuff is no longer important. And I get that I'm not a priority, again, don't wanna be. But indicating that it might be spring till I get access is a little unacceptable. To treat anybody that way, I don't care if it's me or the person you hate, you know, or your enemy or whoever, you don't treat people like that, especially on the phone, especially when you're in a, in a position of power. You don't treat people that way.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yep, thank you. Please, Skylar, you're up.
Commissioner? Well, I guess we'll just start off with my rebuttal against all that whole conversation. Ms. Oppler did contact me on the phone, I was out waiting. At the time that she did contact me, she asked why her road hadn't been bladed or hadn't been opened up. I told her that it was no, it was not a priority at this time due to being a vacant farmstead. We would get to it when we had time to get to it. She then again got heated, I told her, listen, I understand that you need to access to that, but it is a vacant farmstead, it is not high on our priority list. When we get caught up, we will open it. So it is, turn these web of lies that she's out here spewing against me. This isn't the first time she's attacked me. She's come out to the county shop and attacked me, said I was incompetent, didn't have the right to have this job. She's done it when I first started, why I wasn't, wasn't qualified for this position, everything like that. So at what point do we now take this as harassment of a county employee? Because I'm, I did hang up on her, because she started, she called me a young punk or whatever. And I was like, I do not deserve to take this and I don't have the phone, which anyone should've. This is a, we're on a record-setting year for snowfall. What was the last, what was the snow total, it was 20-some inches of snow. We have 1,200 miles to open up. It doesn't happen overnight, the wind blows, closes right back down. There's priority roads, there's federal aid roads that need opened up, that's our priority number one. Bus routes when we can't get, when the buses are running, we had the Christmas break that, that really helped us so we didn't have to focus on bus routes immediately. It's a lot of work that goes into keeping this county moving that some people just don't understand. And quite frankly, I'm getting sick and tired of this one person attacking us. So requesting a formal notice that she put, that something happens with it the next time we get harassed by her.
Okay. Well, I think that matters resolved. I think we'll move forward and continue with the meeting, huh?
Good, good.
Good, well, go ahead and start with anything you wanna start with first.
All right, so during the snowstorm, we have three employees out there that are, their vacation times, they couldn't use their vacation time and we're on a use it or lose it scenario. So I'm asking for an extension on their vacation time. We've got three, three of our longest employees out there, they use it or lose it while we couldn't use it due to the storm. I forgot to ask the last meeting, that is on me, but I'm now requesting that we extend, give them an extension to use their vacation time.
What we've done in the past, it's usually always on an ugly winter, there's always just one or two guys that had some vacation time towards the end of the year that they didn't use, so... I think we should extend it because obviously these guys were running...
Well, I agree, if you're shorthandish and you make these guys take vacation, I mean, what are you gonna do then? You gonna bring in a contractor and take them vacation?
If you had had four blade operators running during Christmas there, I think, I don't think anybody would be here right now, they'd all be missing. So I think, I think taking their vacation away after asking them to work weekends and everything and stuff too would be unfair, so...
Can you go with it?
Well, that's the thing, we need them on the roads and that's where, I guess, if that's the case, I feel like we should probably extend it maybe till, I don't know, probably April or May. I don't think extending it just to February, it's gonna, you might be disabled in February, so...
What do you feel, Skylar, what do you think they need, going into the first of May?
Um, I've talked to some other counties, they extended it out as far as June, June 15th.
Well, I would think a month or...
Whatever, whatever reasonable one, I just, extending it a month probably is a good program, so...
Because we're, we're in for a bad winter.
Yep, unless something really changes, right, these guys probably aren't gonna get a lot of opportunities from here for a while, so... I guess I would entertain a motion to extend the vacation deadline or give them a, what's the proper wording?
What are these guys, a week a week?
Uh, it varies, some only a week, a couple of days, you know, like, I think the lowest guy has a week.
There's only, it's about two or three operators already, because a lot of the department hasn't accrued that much time yet.
Correct, so it's three senior operators.
Sure, which they accrue the most time, so it makes sense, it's harder to bring, so... I guess I would entertain a motion to extend that deadline to, let's call it June 1st.
June 1st, yeah. I'll make a motion to, to extend to June 1st as a noun.
Commissioner Earl makes a motion to extend the vacation use deadline for the road employees till...
I'd extend it, I mean, I second it.
June 1st, and there's a second by Commissioner Maturi. Any more discussion on the subject? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vacation extended.
Okay, so I've talked to some other counties, got their policies on overtime. Right now, we have to work our 40 hours before we get our overtime. That means on a Sunday afternoon or Sunday morning when we come into the house, no, it's not overtime for them. So I'd like to amend our overtime to anything outside their normal working hours. So that means if they work Monday, if they work an hour extra of overtime, that's an hour of overtime. If they take a day of vacation in the middle of the week, then they have to come in on a Saturday to lose that overtime. So if we, if we do anything outside their normal working hours, then that covers their overtime on weekends, holidays, stuff like that.
That's an art Dakota law, though.
Uh, no, well, Burley County does it, though.
Can we though, if it's an art code law?
If it's an art code law, then other counties would be breaking law. So I think, I mean, if nothing else, let's open a discussion to have, have looked into.
Because I know after the last meeting, you had mentioned something. And I went and I looked under the labor laws and it says right in there that you have to be working the 40 hours. In other words, if you take vacation and it's not, it's not actively working, you just take a vacation of eight hours, but then you put in like 48 hours that week because you used vacation those eight hours, we cannot give you overtime. We found it, you know, we found it in the labor laws.
Well, that the vacation doesn't count and...
Yeah, no, vacations, degree, all that, it's not counted.
You won't change the state law, that's the way it is.
I mean, Ken Wicker didn't do it that way.
But I think Ken and Electric, aren't they union?
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
There's probably one, yeah.
I think you guys better really look into it.
Right, well, I mean, it's something we could probably take into consideration, but I know now, I mean, Sunday's always been the first day of work week for, I mean, quite a few places, that's why Sunday's not overtime. But, I mean, if you work into Thursday or Wednesday and Thursday, by that week, you're probably already on overtime during your normal working hours if you start on Sunday, so...
Do you say Burley County does this?
It's a federal law.
I don't know, well, I'm just, I mean, it's something we could probably look into or something. I don't think a decision can be made today on that, but...
Yeah, no, we just opened a discussion for it, because we have to...
I don't know, we probably have to look into that, I'm not sure how to comply. Joe, not being here today and stuff, or we draft, contact Pam Lynde or something, somebody who's got a little more knowledge on the subject?
Vacation in the summer, Saturday, Sunday, we're great with that.
Okay, so now it's snow events, so I guess you guys did declare a snow emergency?
Yes, morning.
So I do have two contracts with, um, dozer operators, one dozer, one snowcat. So I don't know if you guys wanna review them and look over them, or are you gonna do it after bill's time?
Sure, but who do you got, who's...
Uh, we have Russ Lawler, or with Lawler Construction here out of Linden, and then Sunry Santa Gravel out of, out of Minna. They're gonna bring down a snowcat. It's kind of a new thing. Everybody I've talked to says they'll, they'll do a dozer three to one, so they get three times the productive.
What are the rates compared to a cat?
Relatively close.
Are they?
Yep, pretty close, and it's in the contracts, if you guys wanna...
Did you get a contract or what?
I don't know, I haven't seen a contract for them.
No, I brought them with today, I just got both of them back this morning, so...
And what's a snowcat compared to a dozer?
Um, they use them a lot in the mountains. It's just a big thing on tracks, it's got a 12-foot blade on it.
Kind of like a dozer?
Kind of like a dozer, yeah.
On a rubber track?
Uh, rubber and cleats, yeah, they put metal cleats on them. They were used in, Sunry Santa Gravel used them in Fargo, and Fargo had all that snow to work on the piles, to push it up. They, some people called it Mount Fargo, if you remember years ago. They were using dozers down there and they couldn't keep up, and then they brought two snowcats and they pulled the rest of their dozers away because the snowcats were keeping up with them, so...
Do you think that's gonna be enough for now then, for what you see, or are you still looking?
I believe that that shouldn't be enough. Sunry Santa Gravel does have a secondary, a second snowcat that we can add on if we need to. Or we can also talk to Russ Lawler about bringing on a second dozer if we need to.
Then are we utilizing our dozer as well?
A little bit if we have the manpower.
Okay, but ours isn't a low ground pressure dozer, is it?
Oh, it's a...
So that'll, and that'll struggle probably.
It's gonna struggle and, the snow was very hard on undercarries.
That's tough on the undercarries.
Very tough on the undercarries. And we just, we just spent a lot of money replacing our undercarries, so...
I do, and I did reach out to Milo Kramer at KNH2 and I think that was a possibility. He didn't call me back, he said he was gonna put the blade on one of his other dozers and...
Well, did he?
I mean, he'd be available, but he didn't make it sound like he was desperate to do it. But if we did need someone here, maybe interested, so... But I haven't heard from him, he said it would take a little while to get that bill's way down because everything was covered in snow. But I told him, I said, well, for now, I knew we had had at least one contractor with Russ and I knew you were looking for other ones, so at this time, I told Milo, if we need him, we might let him know. And he said that's a possibility too, so...
Do you have that marked out as a priority?
Uh, we're, we're, that's what needs to be done and we're... We are working on that as we speak. We've got the, obviously, our priority roads will be on federal aid roads first, you know, and then other secondary farm to market roads, stuff like that, so those will be our...
Is there quite a few cuts that gotta be pushed back or...
I'd say just off the top of my head, we're probably close to 50, 60 spots.
So how do they do that as far as right of way, I mean, if there's a fence line that they push?
What do they do there, yeah, just gonna bring that up?
Uh, well, they try to, try to find a place to put it, or you just push the pile down and like flatten it out. We're not here to clean the ditches out and bring them back down to dirt, you just...
I mean, sometimes they just push the whole fence, I know Max, Jesse gets to do that, he just pushes the whole fence away, whatever.
Yeah, well, we don't really wanna do that because that just opens up another whole can of worms. And sometimes if you get enough snow, you can kind of build over the top, so... Or you can just find spots where you can push it and find room.
Feather it off.
Yeah, feather it off and stuff.
But you're gonna, you're gonna contact landowners if you're gonna try and...
Yeah, we will contact the landowners too, if we need to push on the right of ways.
Snow blowers is not an option there and that kind of stuff? I know that the state usually takes snow blowers, they do a good job there, that, you know?
They get it blown back, yeah.
Yeah, they got different ditch lines over a lot of areas too versus...
Yeah, and then they just, all they're doing is, they're making more room. Like if you flatten the snow out and everything like that, you're hoping the wind can carry that snow back through there. You know, they, they do, and the snow blowers make it just a straight angle and that's the worst thing you can do sometimes for the... and that's the worst thing you can do sometimes for the, you know, they have the manpower and the resources to go out and do this stuff every, every day.
We got a different deal with all these bean fields that we never had years back.
Yeah.
And they're bare, and it blows into these road areas, it's a nightmare. If you even get a permit or the okay from the landlord to go in and not disturb the soil profile because they hold tail, if it lets you ridge it, would be ideal.
Yes, but in those bean fields, it's already blowing clean by the time we get there, and then there's no snow to, to ridge in there, so.
Well, maybe they'll let you push it on their, the land there.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we're, we're looking into multiple opportunities of what we can do, because we're only January, you know, everybody here has been through some bad winters where you're in March and April and they're still snowing. I think ninety-six, ninety-seven is the record for North Dakota, and that is a hundred and some inches of snow. I think right now.
He gives rest of the snow before we, I mean, it may melt, who knows?
Yeah.
And maybe no more snow, you don't know, that this front that was down south was talking ten to eighteen with forty mile an hour winds. We'd have a nightmare here if we didn't have.
Well, I think the big thing too with reaching out, and especially like, I know when, uh, when we had the conversation about bringing Russ on, and I had told Skylar, I said, "If you can find somebody else to start doing it," because I talked to other counties, Logan, McIntosh, Kidder, Wells, Morton, they were all hired, they're doing the same thing we were doing, so there's only a finite amount of contractors and dozer workers and things to it, if you wait too long, you're gonna be without, so that's why we were proactive about it, and that's why we declared the emergency too, is we really wanted to bring these folks on. You know, if we get lucky and we get a week or two or three a year where we have a nice stretch, we can get them all pushed back, then hopefully if we run into another tough stretch again, we're a little more prepared, because right now, we're limping, I mean, if we could get a big one again with some of those cuts out there, I don't know if we'd get some of those roads open right away with the blade, it just, it's, they're pretty deep.
Do you have a contract that is signed so we know what the dollar amount is per hour?
Yes, they, yes.
That we can get a copy and take a look at?
Yeah, well, you guys, uh, the chairman will have to sign it and then get it authorized, it's only Joe.
Well, why don't you just bring up here, so everybody can take a look at him now, I guess, I mean, we're talking about it, so. So, and, and did Russ start?
No.
Okay.
Because there's not a signed contract yet, so. I was in contact with Russ this morning, and he was okay with that because he had a few other things he wanted to do, I told him, I'd contact him later this afternoon.
And with Sunry, so when are these guys prepared to start then?
Uh, soon as the contract.
Immediately, okay.
Immediately.
Well, good, sooner the better.
Is there a limit that we have to guarantee X number of hours with these contracts or not?
Okay. When they get there, they get, you know, when they get done, they get done. I know with Sunry Santa Gravel is, they're, they like to work, when they move in, they move in to get it done, so.
Anything else, Scott?
So when will these guys start?
Uh, probably tomorrow morning, tomorrow.
Let's say he starts this morning.
Right, well, I mean, that's the thing, I don't, I mean, we'll get, I, I have to.
He just wants it on a map?
Right.
So he knows where to go?
Yeah, we're putting it on a list, we're putting it on a list form, and then we, I mean, Russ is pretty familiar with the county, if he would like a map of the county, we could definitely get it, but the operators are going down and doing streets and avenues, like, there are seventy-fourth street between first and second avenue, that's how we're doing it, and there's a couple spots, and you know, there might be three, three sections in that mile, I mean, to be pushed back, so.
Last Friday, what did you say at after work last Friday, before Christmas?
Uh, the wind and the extreme cold.
It was very windy most of the day.
Was it windy? Because I know in town here, it didn't look bad at all, and that's why I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, it was just.
Because the state was cold, and we were sitting there.
But still, it was.
You know, people calling you, and you're wondering, and you hear you're working, so that's why there's packs and lots.
I mean, it's something, even in my yard, it blew pretty good, I think, you know, I opened up to get out, but by the end of the day, that's not long short again, you know?
That's the nature of the general public.
Yeah.
Well, I think the big thing is I, right away, I mean, I had called Skylar, where you contacted me, guys talked and running, and I, you know, I, I do my best not to micromanage the group because I, I mean, we hired a superintendent to run the road department, and I, right away, what he told me, and he said, you know, he said, just with the wind and the cold, and, but then the next day, they were out on Saturday and Christmas Eve, and it was way better weather, and I felt they were way more productive, and so when you are, when you measure it, afterwards, it was a pretty wise decision, because I felt like if you spend half the day, you know, Thursday afternoon and Friday when it was wind blowing, and then you had to go and redo it all again, then you were that much further behind anyway, and actually, what proved it was Christmas Eve, they went out, knocked a bunch of trails open, Christmas Day, we got fifty mile an hour winds, and the same road that I drove out to go to Christmas on, on the way back, had two-foot snow drifts on it, they made redo it from the road that they even redid the day before, so it was just a stretch where you can spin your wheels and you can burn your guys out sometimes by just operating to make some people happy, and that's where I felt like that was a wise move, even though right away I was like, "Oh, man, I don't know if that's the best move," but it, I believe it was, so.
It's behind us.
No.
Excuse me, um, I just have a question, does, if we continue to get all this, you know, more snow, does the county have an opportunity or an option to be able to abandon some roads that are traveled, like, oh, in our, you know, we're five and a half miles off, and we have numerous directions we can go to get out to a main highway? And I think people would be, would be okay with having maybe some of the roads, you know, designated as access roads, and some of the others maybe left as non-priority, we'll get to them if we get to, you know, I don't know, that's even an option with the nine-one-one, and all those things that you guys have to comply with, I was just, just curious.
Well, I agree with that, I, I think some of these secondary roads, if we have to abandon them, if there's nobody living on them, if they have to go two miles farther west or east to get on the federal aid road, I think you gotta abandon some of these roads for the winter, in the spring of the year, go down with a snowplow in the way, and throw the snow off, and let it melt, and let the roads firm up. That's, I just feel that some of these, you have to, to cut expense, what we're, what we're facing on expenses, guys. And I might drive that road once out of five weeks, and if I know it's not open, I'm gonna drive two miles farther east and take the federal aid road and take it and go north.
And I think it's a communication.
Just gotta post it or?
Yeah, yeah, just a communication with whoever's our, the road person is out there to say, you know, "We're willing to work with you guys because we're gonna have to work together, this is gonna be a long winter." You know, so I just want you guys to know that we're willing out there, if we can keep in touch with people or to know that a certain road's not gonna be maintained because we just got twenty-four inches of new snow, you guys need to use this road. Great, fine, you know, if we can get a network, I don't know how that all works, but I think we're willing.
Right, I mean, the proper way to probably do it would be to probably post some of those roads, I mean, because, because you have a scenario where you have the UPS driver or somebody who's out from, you know, and, um, you basically close the road down temporarily, I mean, whether that's for a month or a couple weeks or whatever, and because, like you said, twelve hundred miles of road, we can shrink it down to even eleven hundred would be, you know, and, um, some of these places that have two ways to get in, maybe you just close down, you maintain one really good one, and that's just how it's gotta be, I mean, those are the, you know, obviously, not everybody's going to agree with that, and you're gonna have issues with that too, but I think as a board and as a group, we have to do what's best for the county as a whole, and that's where, I mean, especially, I mean, even if you're not shorthanded blades, if you can cut a day off of cleaning out roads so that people are getting into town on day two or three instead of four and five, that's how you gotta do it, you know?
Maybe five out of these six, five out of ten of these roads are just for farming, to get to the fields.
Well, there is, there's cut across roads and things that are, things that make the mail route shorter and stuff too, that in my opinion, during the heart of winter, you're gonna have to probably shut it down, I, they're gonna have to do a, a loop and go around, I mean, what's the difference if the delivery service or the mail is saving fuel or we're burning, you know, some of these burning fuel, whether you're cleaning the snow or you're driving extra, so. I don't disagree at all, I think as long as we map it, probably put it on our Facebook page, probably put it on the, the website, you know, and, and then also post the, I mean, we'll have to post the roads that way, and people turn off of, right, they know this two miles, they can get open to the highway area, or, you know, or something that's, you're gonna have to take the long way around because that's the way everybody takes, or that's the easier one to maintain because you got a deep valley or a ridge that you just, you know, you're not gonna keep open, I, I don't disagree with it at all, the big thing about it is it's gotta be communicated, it's just gotta be out there so that we don't have people getting stranded in the middle of nowhere, but I don't want people just abandoning a road because they don't wanna open it no more, we should all be probably agreeing on it and stuff too, and then it should be posted, like, like we do if a road's flooded. You barricade on it, yep, and if the weather, if the weather straightens out, you get a month where it's good, you go back and you open that road, but during these events, we need to, we need to restrict and get these routes down so we can keep our emergency services and our school bus routes open and.
Just gotta, it's common sense.
Yeah, we've, I've started to talk with the operators since we've discussed this a little bit, of shutting down some roads and how we wanna post it, obviously on our websites, you know, like the one that we use for when the roads are flooded.
Yep.
Road closures like that, but posting that, like signing it and stuff like that might be a little tough.
It would be.
Yep. Well, we have barricades, but then it snows and it covers barricades, now we're gonna go, I mean, we're looking into alternative ways.
There's gotta be a way to do something though, because the one thing that is worse some is you get someone who comes down here, hasn't been down here for a month, and they don't know that's closed, right? I know of that scenarios, especially with like the FedEx guy, he always takes this cut across, well, after a three-day home dig or, and it's, and you know, you, you,
You know.
And then you get a call from the farmer who came to pull him out, that's like, "You guys need to do something," it's like, "Hey, man, I didn't know the FedEx guy was gonna take that road," so. I mean, you gotta be careful, you gotta do something, whether, even if it's just a couple cones, you gotta try something.
There's a little ridge on that road on the side, ain't it?
Right, block it off, dude, I guess that's not a bad idea.
And like, we're looking into probably in the springtime with these designated roads that aren't, need, that do not need to be maintained in the wintertime, putting up, other counties do like no winter maintenance signs, that's all.
Well, there's gotta be, there's gotta be something, because we have too big of a maintenance route, we're.
I don't use during the winter, they could be in work, there's no one there.
But you just got the people.
The people know.
Right, there's gotta be a part of it.
We've got totally different means today than we did twenty years ago.
And it's just not the farmers, because there's other people out there, they may use chem-electric or somebody out there and all that.
Well, that is the trouble, some of these, some of these roads, while nobody lives on them, there's power lines running across them for miles too, one, one example I'll bring up, because I thought of this myself, is you have, uh, so like sixty-sixth street by my parents' old farm, and they're not living there, but that power line goes all the way back there, zig-zigs all the way to bombulars and every, so, if there's a break between bombulars and the highway, you have to get on that road. That doesn't mean you open it day two, but at some point, you probably have to get it open because they gotta check the power on it, so. But I think there's a plan, we can work something out, if we can even shave a hundred miles off our route, that would save, we just, and not so much shave it out, but at least it goes, prioritize it, so.
Be otherwise, it just snows.
Right, but I think it's something to keep looking into because this winter's far from over, so. Start looking at plans to become more efficient that way, and we're just, we're gonna do the best we can.
Cut expense, cut expense.
Might have to have a public hearing after that last public hearing, just for closing roads, maybe, I don't know. Skylar, yeah. I got a lot of people that ask me now about private roads, if, you know, want open, there's quite a few people call me, I mean, if they're gonna be able to do that, or, what are we gonna, are they gonna charge something for that?
Well, I thought at the last commission meeting you brought this up, if you guys okayed us to go into private yards and private drives?
Well, I think, I think what we're getting at is there's a difference between doing it without being requested and having some of these, like, I know during the storms, I had some phone calls, and those phone calls were, I mean, a lot of it was either some kind of health-related issue, something like that.
With a possible health related.
Well, because the, here's, here's the, here's the example I use, if this person who thinks they're about to have a health issue or something's coming up, and they call the ambulance, the ambulance goes out there and they can't get out there, they're gonna call the sheriff, and the sheriff calls the road department, we're gonna be out there opening it anyway. I'm not saying you just go out and blast somebody open, but if somebody calls and they need it, and they're out in that area, you know, and I don't know whether the right thing or the wrong thing is to do too, but the wrong thing is probably to just leave someone flat out stranded there. That being said, there's other people that open themselves up, they don't ask for help, there's no way to make that equitable. Some people are gonna do more and some people are gonna do less, but when I get these emergency calls and from their family members and from stuff, I think you have to respond, that's just the way I feel. I could be wrong, you know?
I wanna say what I feel, maybe I'm totally wrong, I chose, he chose, Frank chose to live in a rural area. If you don't live along that main road, that's your responsibility to open that road up. The people that chose to live in town, they've got a home, they got a driveway and a sidewalk, the city goes by, they open the road up. The driveway, the sidewalk is that man's expense in town. The city doesn't come back and open his driveway or his sidewalks, that's my feeling.
Some of these guys are asking, they'll, they'll get a letter call out there, he said, "I can open up my own road," but, he said, "I can't get it open enough for the lowers, it won't get this much snow." If I could just get somebody there to push it off to the side.
Then I'd say, and I'm gonna make, bring it to the, the public's attention here, I think they should have a policy that they give X number hours, and maybe I'm way wrong with this, I'm just speaking from my gut, give each individual, that's what it has to come to, in a contract, you get X number of hours per year in blading or snow removal at a hundred, hundred and fifty bucks an hour, say up to five, six hours per year. After that, there's a rate of two, two hundred and fifty bucks an hour. Just a thought.
Well, in other counties, they, they, they will do, they will open roads like that, they have a hourly rate for them.
They do.
They call in and they request it, it's done at the county's timeline, not just the next day or whatever. And it is, and they charge them an hourly rate, and then they get billed for it.
They get billed.
I don't think that's a bad idea, because then you would know which places you could go into, people would go in, yeah, we want ours cleaned, then you, you know, you would know, okay, we're gonna start, we're gonna go into there, we're not cleaning some that don't want you in there, and you know?
As of right now, we were only, we were only one of the yards that were called in.
Called in.
I had guys would ask me at a funeral, could I get my road open, it's, I don't live there, but I was told if you called in, complained, we'll open it. And I said, "Well, I'm not gonna say nothing on that," damn, I said, "I won't say a word on that," I said, "I think there has to be a policy in this county with a dollar amount set that everybody knows and there's a contract signed." And there's guys that have pay owners in their yard, if they can get it done for nothing, they'll have it done for nothing at the county expense of everybody, and they won't touch, why would they?
That's the way it used to always be, I mean, no, they used to drive in the yards, but that's probably not a viable thing anymore nowadays, you know, but if they knew what the hourly rate was, it was gonna cost you fifty dollars an hour or seventy-five dollars an hour or whatever.
Yeah.
And all liability onto the county of advantage is done, not.
I think that would be a good idea.
You can't get into some of these yards, can you, Scott? I can snow those in, but if the yard isn't clean, how am I gonna turn around and exit back out?
Right.
You can't do it.
It's very tough, and some farmsteads are very clean, some farmsteads have a lot of stuff laying around and.
And you don't know it.
Well, it's buried with snow, you don't.
I think there has to be some sort of a contract law, but there's the commission.
But there's been quite a few people asking, I don't know a lot of them asked you or called you guys, but, I mean, I have four or five guys called me.
I have a lot of them, I sent them to him, I don't micromanage my area, or the county, it's the superintendent, that's who we hired.
So, I just said, "Well, I'll bring it up at the meeting here and find out what, what we wanna do a little bit."
Send it to him.
I know, but I mean, the one thing you guys, I, this is the reason why it's hard to be strict, but it's probably necessary, and the reason is, is, so you're up ten miles east of town, and somebody that's got a pretty bad driveway that's gonna take an hour plus to open up, and you're gonna charge them two, three hundred dollars, let's say it's five hundred dollars an hour, and on the west side of their route that they haven't got to, there's people that don't have a school bus route open, or they're stranded, like, and on their main, they, they got out to their main road, their main road's not open because we're opening a private driveway that someone's paying for. Well, I think, a lot of them don't care until after, you guys can get everything else done first. Right, well, vice versa now, we're out maintaining our school bus routes, and we're getting done, and we're doing our job, and everything's going great, and now someone's calling in and complaining because they pay a bill, or there, you asked me to pay a bill, and you made me wait five, seven days, I mean, no matter what you do, there's gonna be that conflict.
Well, there's the nature of.
I know, that's why, I mean, that's why I'm just telling you, there's gonna be conflict no matter what, I think you gotta be stricter about it with these private roads and stuff, because if you had private, we're talking about cutting a hundred miles off our route, but then you're gonna add that hundred miles right back on with these roads, every time you add a quarter or a half mile, and every time you do a road, you usually have to do at least two passes because you gotta go in and you gotta come out, so if it's a mile road, you just add a two miles worth of blading really, and I, I know, I, I respond to these calls when these people call, and I'll just tell you, and full of them were like, the elderly folks that were very concerned about their health. Maybe they were playing it up, maybe they weren't, I did what I felt was right, and I responded by calling road superintendent, asking him where he was, where their guys were, if it was possible they could get it done. Nine times out of ten, these guys are in the general area anyway, and they got to it within two to three hours, reasonable time, I felt, we did a good job, but.
So you're saying that somebody would call us bitching about it, we're supposed to call the route and tell them to go ahead and do it?
I'm not telling you that's what you're supposed to do, what I'm telling you is I used my reasonable belief on what people were telling for information, and I used to judge that whether or not that was an emergency or not. And some people called me, and I know one for a fact called me, and his main excuse was the county's always opened it, so they should keep opening it, and I said, "Well, I don't think that's gonna happen." And I said, well, I don't think that's gonna happen anytime soon because we're swamped. I used that decision to kind of filter some of that out because I don't believe it's fair to sit here in a meeting and we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do this. And then we go in and go, ah, we're gonna leave that up to Skylar. We're gonna let him decide if he's gonna make that person mad or not. I took it upon myself to go, man, this sounds like an emergency. I'm gonna contact the road superintendent, see what he thinks. A lot of times I got a call from those purple people and I got some from the sheriff going, hey, this person called out, I just talked to him. Talked to Skylar, we're gonna do the best we can. A lot of people that don't think it's an emergency aren't calling the sheriff and stuff too. And those are the things I used to decide if I felt like it was an emergency or not. Maybe I was wrong, maybe not. I don't feel like that was. But I don't take every call and I'm just like, oh yeah, we're just gonna put you on this list and we're gonna keep growing the list of work. While the meantime, the same federal aid road that's blown shut three times in a week is still gotta get done. Adding work onto it isn't gonna make the situation better. And that's my opinion.
They're the same rules.
Well, and that's, but, but that's, that's the problem when you open the door to like, oh yeah, we're gonna open yours too and we're gonna always open it. My situations, when I felt like it was an emergency, I told them, we're gonna get you open and you need to get to town. I'm not telling them like, oh, we'll maintain your road all winter now, so, no, that wasn't the way I felt.
So that wasn't an emergency. How you got the neighbor's chickens to eat water?
Well, I'm telling you, that's part of your job as a commissioner and too, and sometimes that's a tough decision to tell someone it is or isn't. But I don't believe it's always like, oh, just kick it to the road superintendent and he can decide who wants to make that person mad. I don't feel like, I mean, we're servants of the people. They're calling their servant, asking for some help. Some of it's reasonable, some of it I believe is unreasonable and I did my best to meet it as I saw fit. Did I get some wrong? Probably. Did I get some right? Yeah, but he's not gonna do any better. He's gonna make mistakes and go places we didn't think should have, and he's gonna go other places like, man, you didn't get there? So, I mean, it's a struggle during an event and a snow emergency. No matter what we do, there's gonna be people upset. Best thing you can do is stick to your practices and your policies, which is stick to your main roads, your school bus routes. I mean, who's to say these folks aren't gonna get upset when you went and did that guy's road before this road? He's got a pay loader. I, you're gonna have the same squabbles. It's just gonna be a different, I'm not criticizing your thinking. I'm with you. Thinking out of the box, it's tough to manage these roads. I like what you're thinking, Dan. I'm not, I'm not trying to jump on you guys. What I'm telling you is in the end.
Oh, yeah.
The easiest decision is we're gonna have to just try and create a policy of sticking to our like main section line roads, our main federal aid roads, the school bus routes. Maybe if the mail route continues a part of it, but those are the things our job is to do. Everything else after that is, is for.
Suck it.
Gets gratitude essentially, it's an emergency base.
And that's what a lot of them say. Well, I don't care. Do all your other stuff first and then if you got time afterwards, can you open my road? Can you widen out? Open with my holder? Can you, can you just push to widen?
Right.
Can we continue to do that or not?
I think, well, I don't, well, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. If we're just like now, we're probably caught up with everything. You wanna go in and start widening these guys out and keeping track of your time and doing it, it's probably fun. But you gotta, I agree, and I don't disagree with it. I'm just, I'm not trying to run you guys' idea down. I'm with you. I wanna help people too. But that conversation has to come with a dedication that we're gonna support the guys with their main stuff first. Unless it's an emergency, you're gonna call for an ambulance or a sheriff, that's an emergency.
I think most people really.
People understand.
Well, we have to stick to it too. We gotta be tough about it. We gotta go, hey, I know you're frustrated. You might have to wait three, four or five days. We'll, we'll do our best. We'll give it to the road department. They'll put it on a list. And when they're caught up in their areas, they'll do the best they can to get you there. I think that's fair. But we have to make sure that we're maintaining our main jobs first and we're supporting our guys to do that. Not, not saying it here and then going out there and going, hey, by the way, when you're, it's, it's mayhem. It's chaos. And because I tell you, like when M U called me that day and Hazleton was out of power and people around Litten that were tied to that line were on that too. There was lots of people out of power. In my mind, that's a re-divert. If they needed three blades and a dozer, by God, get it to them. Because health was, was, there were people that legitimately could maybe freeze to death. That becomes an emergency. In my mind, I used my judgment and did that. Now, I don't think we ended up helping M U. But it was on the table and I, when I called Skylar, he was like, absolutely, that's priority number one now in that area. And that's what we did. So, I think we gotta use some of our own judgment on that and, and, and take the heat when we're wrong, I guess, but.
So you're saying now, if somebody calls me, I should just have them call Skylar if you can open it up?
Well, I think you'd have to probably lay it, or kind of even like what Dan said. You're probably gonna get charged on it because it's your private driveway. We'll put it on a list and we'll do the best we can, but maybe. Right, maybe a few days, prepare yourself. If you need to get to town before that, you're gonna have to maybe call your neighbor, call a contractor, somebody, get yourself, I'm sorry, we're swamped.
It should be no different than an individual that lives in town. They pay for the driveway to be cleaned. They pay for their sidewalks to be cleaned. And if the city comes along and throws that snow ridge across the driveway, that turns into cement. The city doesn't give it, darn. You shovel it or you get a bobcat and you open it, period. And you pay for it.
Agreed, Dan?
So I think we need to set a rate and have harmony with everybody. Because I have a driveway that's three quarter of a mile in, that that's where they home set it, that's my problem. If I got a rural farm that sets right along the road, that's my problem. I don't have that cost, but I gotta open it up to get in and out of my yard. That's just the way it is. That's my feeling, but I may be way wrong, Dan.
No, I don't think you're wrong. I don't.
What is the rate? People wanna know.
We gotta get a rate.
Well, we do, I don't know if we have a snow removal rate, but we have a blade rate. I mean, we do have an agreed upon rate.
Yeah, I mean, we, we all have to up it for snow removal.
Well, I think we always did. I wanna say it was somewhere like two hundred an hour for summer, like three hundred or three fifty for snow removal, I thought.
It has to be.
Well, we, we do have a rate on it. We can find that. But I, I remember, snow removal is quite a bit higher. It's about a time and a half higher.
Go ahead, Paul.
Does the farmers get reimbursed for the fuel that they burn opening the county roads?
No.
You're not supposed to be on it. That's what they'll say to you.
Cause they say, uh, how am I supposed to get out? I opened it how many times? So that girl can get to school? I get nothing for that.
I know, but I mean, it's at the same time.
And there's some guys that spend a lot of time and a lot of moving snow.
That's right. I know. And I, I think the policy and the protocol has always been if you have to get to town before the blade gets to you, you probably have to do it yourself. I mean, that, I know, when I lived, where I lived, which I mean is right near your neighborhood there, we opened that road all the time or we took the snowmobile to town. It wasn't fun, but we were on the road where it mainly only served us. I mean, so that's kind of where that value came in. I mean, we had, had to take it ourselves.
Pretty much said, you weren't gonna go into yards and roads anymore. And I'm coming to town the very next day and that county's going in a driveway north of town there. Past the substation going up there, up our, to that log cabin.
And as I stated, Paul, I agree with it's wrong. Because I feel, he chose, she chose, he chose, I chose to live in the rural area. It's, yeah, it's good when it's good, but it can be tough when it's not. That's just the way it is.
Absolutely. So now like the, the, the road, Paul, as Mr. Forge is talking about is a, was a school bus route. So do we go into the school bus routes that are now private driveways that are on a school bus route? Like, I mean, it's very, we're muddying the waters here.
Well, that was the reason why I said it's hard to start going, we're gonna do this and do that and do this, because you're gonna end up in the same boat. That's the problem. Because like you said, the one Paul's talking about, I got a call from the school board president, basically disappointed in us that we're not opening that road so that the school bus can get into his yards. The school bus got stuck there. It's not on a section line. It's not on a quarter line. It's not on any kind of easement road that I know of. But it's a school bus route. So, is that considered a school bus route? It, all the way a quarter, three quarter mile into these people's yards, I didn't feel it was and it didn't get opened right away. And I was like, hey, that's not really our problem. And then I had the school board president basically telling me that we don't do a very good job and everybody's upset at us and the school bus drivers are gonna go on strike and I'm going, wait, wait, I didn't know that was our responsibility. So, again, after getting chewed out by the bus driver and the school board president and the parents that own the place, I called the blade man, said, you better go in and help them out for now and we need to figure out what's going on. Well, it was agreed on after that that those folks were gonna start getting their own kids to school because the school bus driver, even after we opened it, still didn't wanna go in the yard.
Cause it was tough.
Right, and I felt like that was, we, we opened it once so people could get in and out after that, that bought them time to figure out a plan. That's how I responded to that emergency. When you have multiple people telling you, like you said, a school board president, he's frustrated, his bus drivers are mad at him. He called me. I don't believe we should be going into some of those routes. If it's not on section line, the whole point of the section line process is we have easement by law. That's why we maintain those spots. Once you start going off into the private drives, you are opening yourself up to issues.
To liability?
Well, if it's not liability, even just the fact that if you do one, you really should do all. Well, my, my driveway is only a hundred and fifty feet long, but why is that any different from anybody else's driveway then? Like, like that's what I'm getting at. It's the same can of worms, it's a different can of worms, but you've still got a can of worms and that's the trouble.
We chose to live in the country.
Right.
That's just the way it is. They chose to live in town.
But the school bus route, like you said, the school bus route, by law, we are supposed to maintain. But what defines, where does the school bus route end? Does it end at the front doorstep? Does it end on public right of way? That's the trouble. That's when you, like you said, the discussion we're having right here, you know?
Years ago, they bored the kids in town and it got tough, period. Right, Ron?
Well, I mean, that's, like I said, those are the issues you run into and it's, it's not that anybody's wrong or right. There's no right, wrong way to do it. Either be strict and either leave it to the land.
You didn't sit the folks for two, three weeks, some of these families. Right, Ron? Some of these people, just the way it was.
Nobody wants, nobody wants to be at home in the country.
We walked them.
I know, I know. Well, it's gonna be an ongoing battle. It's gonna be an ongoing battle with this weather and there are some.
We should decide something though.
We should decide.
I don't know what you're gonna decide. That's the point. No matter, we, we went over five different options. All of them have benefits and curses. I don't know what the right way to do it is. I, I don't think you're gonna be able to iron out a really good policy right now in the middle of this event. That's the problem.
This is, I'm gonna address it though.
Well, I, yes, but.
Bring up a policy and agree upon the dollar amount, the terms.
A lot of people wanna know, well, but are, are you gonna do something today? A couple of people asked me, are you gonna do something today? So I go, no. Is it gonna cost me fifty bucks to get blade my road open or what's it gonna cost me? I wanna, I wanna get it, gotta get it open somehow.
We can't tiptoe issues. Address them and move on. You're not gonna satisfy all.
Well, I agree and it's also tough for the operators. For me to relate to the operators, do we go in, do we not?
That's right.
I need to make a, as a board, you guys need to make a.
A concrete decision, right?
A concrete decision so we, so we all know. Cause, I mean, Chairman Akron was right. You taped off a hundred miles, but then you add a hundred miles more on private drive roads.
There we are. We're not in the business of making money on snow removal too. That's the other thing. I'm not, I'm not criticizing the idea. I'm on the other side. But I feel like it should be public right of way unless it's like a, an emergency. And that emergency needs to be deemed by either us or the road superintendent or something. And that's, right, I mean, that, cause it's hard getting off the public right of ways. You really are, you're just creating a scenario, so.
It's easy to, not easy, but it's a lot easier to open with a blade of snowplow. I'm sure you can correct me if I'm wrong. And an extension on your blade, a wing, they call it, right?
Yeah.
On a straight road than it is going into a yard.
Oh, yeah.
And you got shallow ditches and you don't know where the road's at because it's so drifted over. I mean, yeah. So it's gonna cost you more to open that private driveway than opening our county roads for the people going to work. Come to the courthouse or whoever that works in town. They will compromise, you know, getting out of their yard to open it up if they have to. Go ahead.
You made a perfect example. You just, you, you guys choose to live where you do, people that live in town. That's one of the reasons we moved off the farm, because after Donnie died, we no longer have snow removal equipment to handle the driveway. And so we were trapped out there. I had the neighbors that helped a few times and I don't wanna do that.
Yep.
So, we made the decision to leave because I'm not gonna open, we have a long driveway there. And Al did come in when the bus came, uh, years ago. But since we put the new house on, he stopped coming in and doing the loop, which was fine. Donnie kept it open for the bus drivers. But I agree also with Aaron that yes, at the street where your private approach, your private drive starts, that's where the responsibility ends even to the school bus. There's no reason those kids, well, I, I know on some, they're three quarters a mile long, some of these driveways. But at some point, the responsibility does have to fall onto their parents to get them out to the highway. And we went many times where Donnie would have to take the easement all the way down to Highway thirteen.
Yep.
To get, you know, he'd open the road that mile or whatever with the tractor and then meet us down at Highway thirteen because the blades hadn't come yet or whatever. There's a lot of snow.
Yeah.
You can't continue, especially as shorthanded as, as it is and the time management being what it is, to continue to even entertain going into private property. It doesn't work. Dollar wise or not, whether it's five hundred dollars an hour as the airman mentioned. You have winter care, you have hourly maintenance, you have everything. It doesn't pencil out. The county doesn't need that much, that bad.
Yeah, well, I'd say for now, I mean, I think you guys have been doing a pretty good job keeping your main routes open. I mean, there's always spots that are worse than others and that can always be the best. Wind blows in one part of the county, not the other, and things are gonna get rugged. But I think you guys did a pretty good job managing through it. And honestly, the, the calls that I did get, I felt like that were emergencies that we all kind of agreed on. Sheriff Sanders was a part of some of them calls. I thought we handled them and we did the best we could. I think that's the case. I don't disagree at all with the policy, but.
So what you said, table it? Don't do nothing?
Well, I don't know why you can make a decision right here today. I mean, everybody's throwing out ideas. It's one of them things, you know. If you wanna have a special meeting down the road here, that's fine. I don't care. And when we're in the middle of the winter, we're in a snow emergency, I have no problem with drafting a policy.
I think we need to get together as a board.
I, I agree.
And if you have any input from out here, say it. And I think we need to draw a policy up and get it in place and bring it forth. If we have to have a special meeting or the next meeting, that it's concrete and get it okay. So he knows, everybody knows. And then Paul said.
They need to bring it in the paper.
Post it in the paper, watch it come up.
Yeah. We got social media, all this. I'm not a social media, but it's out there.
Well, I just, I mean, I think that's right. I think that's, yeah, I think people just wanna know.
They wanna know.
Are you gonna, are you gonna be able, if you cost money, are you gonna be able to open it? I can't get out anymore with my loader. I just need somebody to push a wide open. Can you, will you guys do that? Who can I get to do that?
And if he can't do it right, he'll hire somebody to push it open.
But who? A lot of them don't know who. Who do I get? The county's got a big play, but, there's, you know.
It's not practical as it's got.
No, I wish we would never go to private driveway, private property and stuff like that. But so now, this being said, what do we keep doing? Do we open the ones that we've been opening? Do we stop doing them? Do we not? I mean, that's the confusion that even comes from the road department.
Well, it comes from me, but I'm just telling you, I'm just gonna be honest with you. The reason we're in this mess, as far as a mess of, of muddy waters, is because even the blade operators did things differently. And what I mean is maybe not even the current ones, but there were four. I got some calls from people and they're like, well, that guy used to come in my yard all the time. And I'm like, I didn't even know that.
That's true.
Right, like my, my point is, is you had different commissioners, different operators, different road superintendents. They all have a different opinion of what should be done, what should be getting done. Well, this guy, he used to come in, he used to open my gate. And I'm like, he did what? What? All the way in? Yeah, oh yeah. Everyone. And now, how do you fight that now? Like, how do you go, okay, you're fifty seven, right. And what I'm, what I'm saying, but I don't mean how, like you can't stop it, but you can't just all of a sudden go, well, on December fifteenth, we decided to work. Cause you're on your own for snow removal. Like you can't leave them in the middle of the storm like that. Like, when you're fifty years of protocol or lack of protocol, it's gotta be timely. Like, like the proper time to do snow for protocol is June. The proper time to do summer protocol is in December. Really, I mean, that's the right way to do it. And I'm not saying we have to wait that long, but people need some time to go, oh my God, I need to buy a snow blower. Like, if they don't have one, because the county's always taking care of them. And now you're just like, oh, by the way, Merry Christmas. Like, that's the problem you fight. I'm not, I'm not chickening out or I'm not copping out, but I'm telling you, that's the argument when I get these phone calls. Like, why aren't you coming in no more? And it's like, I didn't know they came into your yard.
So what are you telling him? Where does he go from here?
I don't know what to tell him. I'm telling you.
He needs to know.
I know, well, it's, it's.
That's the way it's always been. We've had to open up these roads.
We use the farm with horses we own anymore and we adjust.
Well, I'm just telling you that the, you know, that, like I told Skylar at this first storm, when he said some of these people are calling, it's bad. And I said, the only thing I can tell you is to keep doing what you've been doing until we come up with something different. And that's because at least he was consistent.
So what's he been doing?
What he's been doing is each blade operator's been doing their own thing. And that's what I'm telling you. Like, the whole policy, everything has never existed and that's the problem. One hundred superintendent, group of commissioners is tough on it. Next one isn't. And these people are always in the middle. Some people ask for things they shouldn't have. Some people don't ask for things they should. And that's always been a problem in Emmett's County. So, my, I guess the crux of my argument is be careful what you create because there's history, there's policy, there's everything. It's gotta be done. At least so it's agreeable. Or you're not gonna get everybody happy about it, but.
Well, it just drags us on. He doesn't know what to do. I don't know what to help people. I mean, we gotta do something.
Well, and what should we do? Like, let's, uh.
Either like Dan said, we gotta, we gotta either, say, here's what it's gonna cost. If people wanna know, here's what it's gonna cost. We're gonna drag that here, open it up. It's gonna cost you whatever, X amount of dollars.
Hour. Blade operator takes care of it. He submits it when he comes in that evening. Dammit, Terry, two hours. Hold the road.
But you only, you only do it after the main road.
After the main road is open.
Only after the main road.
Well, I think most people understand.
They understand that. But I think we've gotta go as a board today and not till next month. And get an agreement with rates and get it in place.
And then we won't.
And draw it up. It's kinda like, it's like with these guys with cats. I think the county, maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong. There should be a contract, say come October fifteenth, that we get a contract with contractors. Even though it's not gonna be used maybe, but we've got a contract. Even though it's not gonna be used maybe, but we've got a contract in place if we needed, need it with an emergency to act on it. Am I wrong in that?
Well, you can kinda have an open contractor, an open agreement, but.
They're gonna go where they can.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have work and someone else does.
So if you don't call them in, they're gonna look at somebody else and go there. And then all of a sudden, you know, that's the problem.
But the rush could go to more than right now.
Well, exactly. We could've had him on contract and then we didn't have any snow. And then he goes to Morton and does it, but then we get a snowstorm and it's like, great, you got a contract. But I got a contract with a different county, so. I mean, I think, this isn't an every year occurrence with this amount of snow. I mean, we've, a lot of people have gotten spoiled over the last couple of years. Where they had to shovel their driveway once, they'd walk away one time and then they were out for the man of the season. I mean, we're just, it's a year. I mean, we, we stopped private work this, this spring when I first come on, going in private drives and blading their driveways. And then this snow started to keep coming and people started calling, cause it's the way they've been done for the last 50, 60 years, whatever. And then.
It's the nature of man. Once you do it, that's what they expect.
So it's.
Joe's not here, but you know, if you're, if you're gonna do this, Adam, do you have a notary? Cause if you're gonna have people signing contracts, you're gonna need somebody that's got a notary to sign it. You're gonna have to get to them to have them sign it.
With a notary.
Prior to you opening their road, and if they can't get out, you can't get in to get them to sign it.
Well, I think we can't, like on those roads like that, you know, if they don't pay, we just put other cars.
Because you have liability. If, if, you're gonna want it in there that there's no liability to the county.
No liability.
Because there's been times, I've heard that the county hit a, hit a well one time and had to replace a well. Because they didn't know it was there. So you gotta be careful with that. And that's something to discuss with Joe. Because if you don't have the contract in place before they need to get out, how are you gonna get in to get the contract?
You guys keep making my case that I don't need to go off the public right of way. I just, that's the way I feel. And that's why I'm arguing against, I don't, I think there is a policy. And that policy is that we shouldn't be going off the, the public right of way. I think when there's emergencies and you have multiple entities involved, like, oh my God, this person needs to get in or out. You make a decision and you vary it off of that. And, cause this policy's not gonna be ironclad. There's gonna be gray areas and cloudy areas and, 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 you know, and would, gee, you have a minimum? Some of these driveways are only 200 feet long. It takes five minutes to go in there and you still charge them.
You made a whole lot of trouble.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, you're gonna have to iron out every detail. I mean, it's, it's not a process you just make at a meeting. That's, that's what I'm trying to, you know, advise against.
Because if you're in a snowy emergency now, would it be beneficial to call the people that are assuming the county's cleaning their road every time or whatever, whether it's after the storm and whatever? And just tell them, things have changed. We don't have the time, the manpower to open up private roads. You are gonna have to secure, like you said, your neighbor, call your neighbor. There's lots of people with equipment around. Call your neighbor to come over with his payholder and push your snow out. Maybe if people knew that they had to find somebody, maybe it wouldn't be that good of a deal. But they need to know. They need a phone call to say, we can no longer come in and clean your yard.
But it's, it's, it's a lot of them wanna know, are you gonna, are you gonna be able to do it or not?
We need to know that, the people need to know that. So there's harmony.
Yes.
People will adjust, that's my opinion.
I think if they're given their warning to say, like right now, we're in an emergency, I think people would understand. Skylar and the guys are trying to get the roads open. We've all, you know, and we're grateful for that. Perfect opportunity to say, hey, guys, we, you know, we don't have the time to come into your yard. So you are gonna have to line up something else for the rest of the winter. Whether it's you have to have a neighbor or a contracting company, somebody. But, you know, so like you said, you just can't drop it. But if they were, now the weather's good, if they were to be able to secure, you know, get into a relationship with the neighbor, that the next time it snows, can you come? Maybe people would be okay with that.
They're gonna try to adjust.
Right, well, I, I agree to that too. I've just, that's, you know, that's, that's been the shock with everybody is when you do something for 50 years. And I'm not condoning that that was done, but it was done for 50 years. These, some of these people, then all of a sudden you drop the ball in the middle of the winter, that's hard to do. That's all I'm advocating on. That's why I just, right? I mean, that's what I'm just saying too. It's like, there's a fine line. It's gotta be carefully crafted. Because no matter what you do, you're gonna leave someone hanging. Leaving them hanging in the winter is a dangerous game. That's all I'm saying. Because snow and cold is different from, you decide you're not gonna blade their gravel road in June. You can survive on a rough road. You get snowed in and your power's out. That's a life-changing, possibly life-ending emergency. And that's, that's where I'm just saying, in the winter, it's hard. Because some people play up things that aren't as bad, other people don't say a thing and they could've used a lot of help. And that's kind of the nature of North Dakotans and winter, and it's hard. I'm just, I know it's easy and everybody's fired up and we're gonna get this policy created. But I've been working for four years trying to create a policy. And every winter I get educated that maybe that's a little strict, or maybe that's too lenient. It's hard. That's all I'm trying to advocate for on it. I don't, I love the energy. I love the fact you guys are thinking outside the box. It's great. But be careful not to just react too fast to just create a bigger monster than maybe we already have. That's, I, if it's the right decision today, it'll be the right decision a couple of weeks from now. If you wanna have a special meeting, I'm all about it. We're in the middle of a snow emergency. We can meet every two weeks. It doesn't bother me at all. I, if that's what we gotta do to react and do our jobs, then that's what we gotta do. I'm fine with that. And I like the ideas. I think keep working on the ideas. I think that's fair enough.
Yeah, I don't wanna rush into it either.
Well, I just don't wanna do something, all of a sudden you're, you're forgetting of an avenue and then you find out during that blizzard, like, oh my God, I never followed that. That's the only thing, that's, but. Anyway, discussion to be continued.
Okay, I guess for the time being, we're just gonna keep going, or we are.
I think you have to concentrate on what you know is your main focal points, which are federal aid roads, school bus routes, mail routes.
We get it out, like, we understand.
And then, and as these calls come in, I think we've just gotta do a job right now filtering. We can craft a policy, I'm not against that. But in the meantime, as of 12:15, if we get a call at 12:30, are we gonna decide if it's an emergency or not? A lot of times, that's, it's easier than you think. Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, that's, right now, I think the focus is to stick to what you know, unless things change. Do our best we can. We just gotta do the best we can.
Favorite priorities are all the main roads, private drive. I got, I was getting phone calls at 5 o'clock in the morning.
I know, we were, I think we were all getting phone calls. It's just the same, there were some people asking for things that.
I mean, people gotta come to reality too, that you don't call at 5 o'clock. They have to talk at night.
I still don't know what to tell them. Well, that's, the point is, is we've never really done what we're trying to do. And I don't wanna just jump in a hurry. We've done it this way for 60 years and at this meeting, we're gonna fix it now. And it might be worse than cool jets. Think about it. If you wanna have a meeting in a week, I don't care. I'm telling you guys right now, you guys help us some ideas, you wanna craft a special meeting.
I'm not jumping in nothing. I'm just making a point.
Right, no, you're right though. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, so, but anyway.
Talk is finished.
You think a little article in the paper kinda warning everybody now to kinda maybe seek out some, seek some other assistance or data?
You know, maybe on the front page, maybe, you know, where it's clear.
Well, I think that probably an article, probably clarifying the snow emergency. And then, like you said, piggybacking on that, okay, county resources are being stretched thin. Everybody's kinda, wanna say you're on your own, but yes, you need to start thinking of alternative solutions for the next big storms, whatever that is.
Not getting down to the top of pages now. It needs to be, everybody gets papers where it's like, okay.
Sure. Yeah, not everybody does get the paper too, which is another problem. Well, we're gonna get around it. You only lay one or two certain driveways. It'll get them out. So anyway, um, one quick thing before we just go off into something else now, interviews. Cause we do have, we do have candidates for our blade opens. When are we gonna do interviews?
I was gonna say something. You're talking very commonly, right?
Yes.
Okay, in my opinion, it should be between Skylar and your Gar and probably Pam. You know, any other board you look at, the board really, the board hires like Skylar. You know, we have to and hire the road superintendent. So it should be out there, we two pretend to hire the people underneath him. That's my opinion. It should be, I, I have a board, Ken board the same way. The board didn't hire, they hired a person in charge. And that's what I think. Skylar should be him and a couple of guys and Pam. Third one that should be in charge of hiring.
Skylar Paul Binder and Gar Schmidt is, he's the assistant road supervisor.
Correctly, I'll read for him.
Right, but I know Pam is just a consultant. She's not really, I mean, so I don't know if that's outside of.
Jump into for advice here, like, we already have this interview scheduled for tomorrow. Starting at 9 o'clock, it runs until 4:30.
Okay.
It's myself and Gar Schmidt and one other person if I decide.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me.
So like, I appreciate Mr. Holmes saying, you guys hire me for a reason, let me do my job.
Yep.
Right, no, I, I think historically, one or two commissioners always participated, usually cause it was that commissioner in that area. Whether or not that's a good or bad process, that's the way it was always done. I participated in a couple, that you have, that Dave I know participated in one with me. And Leonard interviewed some people. I, I mean, it's, so. And that being said, I, I have faith in you and your guys. If you wanna pick the guys you think are qualified to do it, I have no problem with that. It's, usually the road superintendent even previously had asked one or two of the commissioners. And we're like, oh, okay, I'll help interview. I don't know if we have to be there. I think if, like you said, you left room for one more person, somebody wants to be a part of that interviewing, I have no problem with it. I, I don't need to be a part of it, I don't feel. So I, I agree with Gary, like his point too. We hire the department heads, the department heads run their departments. I got.
Does, historically, does the commissioner sit on every board? That's like, you know, we have the sheriff's department, the courthouse, task director. They sit on those boards when they get hired?
No, that's what I mean, that's what I get.
So why is the road department?
Well, cause the road department's special. I mean, that's, I think it should, I'm serious, not, not being sarcastic. People wanna be involved in the road departments, whether it's commissioners.
Sometimes that's how the waters get money.
Well, that's exactly right. I'm, what I'm telling you is like, in my short time here, even like, like when Francis was here, he felt comfortable adding like two commissioners. It wasn't a quorum, but he wanted, he wanted input from the commissioners. Maybe you don't want it that way, and that's fine too, cause it's your department. But if you're requesting to have a commissioner be at the interviews, I think someone will abide. If you don't think it's necessary, nobody wants to be a part of it. I don't see a problem with you.
There's times when Gary brought in that candidate, you know, here's the guy I was gonna hire, or hired or whatever.
Right, after it's all said and done. But yeah, I mean, I, I had no problem with you conducting the interviews yourself.
My way to the problem, who you hire should reflect on you and yourself.
Exactly.
Or none, that we're kinda after you.
Exactly, that's the way it should, am I right or wrong?
A hundred percent right.
Because you ever wanted him, because.
We have to work.
You have two or three of us on there and we hired it and he doesn't turn out, no, it, it's a punch.
So how many, how many people we got?
I think we are interviewing four tomorrow.
And is that all of them then, or you?
No, one I had to kick out cause I couldn't read his application.
Oh, that's pretty hard to, yeah, okay.
I couldn't read it or understand it, so. No choice but to drop him from the interview panel.
I was just careful in your screening process that you're following the right procedures, not that they have some kind of a preference or something. I'm just, I'm wondering.
But I do have one question. What, what, how many are we looking at? Hiring one or two?
Well, I think the discussion like we had before is, I think we want one for sure. But if we had two good applicants, I think we could handle it.
I agree, I agree.
And like we had talked before, even historically, Emmens County, you just had eight blades. We've been running seven for quite a while. And then usually the road superintendent filled in, which isn't a good, it's not a good hire. It, it works during emergencies, but really, we probably should have eight guys. We have the machinery to support that. If you have two good candidates, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with hiring two.
Skylar, you've got three blades in, right?
Yeah, yeah, most of them, I think, was one eye was a back.
Yeah, one's fair.
So in an emergency, and I'm not trying to start no fight, but in an emergency, if we're a team effort and a team, we all throw spikes on, on our shoes. And if we have to, we gotta bring our personnel out of the offices, whatever, that can run a blade, jump in them, and let's get the roads plowed. We'll do our paperwork two, three days later, under a heated environment.
Yeah, that works in a perfect world, but there's big work that needs to be done. We also had those that I was trying to be fixed at that point during the storm. We also had fuel that had to be ordered. We had V-plows that were going down. And if you take an operator out of the seat to fix their V-pow, then there's another operator down. So I think we utilized the manpower to the best of our ability and DB. And once we hire a couple more people, then it won't be an issue. So I think we, there's more than just opening the roads that happens during a snow event. I mean, we have a guy that runs around in the afternoons and delivers fuel to all these operators. Cause they, they don't get, they can't run all day on one tank of fuel. They have to go get fueled up. So that's a, that's a source that, that's part of the support group that goes with all this. So, I mean, we don't have something, we have to get that order and everything like that.
So mainly that, now if somebody goes running around and drives all his fuel around, is that an operator out there?
Well, everybody's an operator out there.
Everybody could jump in a blade if needed, go in an emergency, if needed.
Well, to a certain point, I mean, plowing snow was not just send anybody out, put anybody in a piece of the equipment and let them go. Because then I'm gonna spend more time fishing them out of the ditch than I was getting them on the road. Like I, I was contacted by a few people locally that were like, hey, if you guys need help, I mean, you know, well, I don't know their experience capability of plowing snow. If you plow it wrong, if you plow it wrong, it's just gonna hurt you all winter. If you don't have the experience, you're gonna end up in the ditch. And now I gotta send someone else, a different operator from a different area to come pull you up. It's a, plowing snow is not just easy when, I mean, there's 1200 miles of road. Every corner's a little different, everything like that. I mean, sometimes you can just well put a white sheet of paper in front of your face and try to drive down the road. That's what it's like with the snow blowing back at you. And I don't want unskilled people in there doing that. And it's the safety of the general public and the operator and the chaos.
I, I was gonna bring up one thing in relation to that too, is do you think it'd be beneficial for us to have maybe one or two plow trucks? Cause someone brought up the idea that, I know there's other counties that do actually use like a, like the state type trucks with a plow on front. For mainly, like obviously probably not your secondary roads and stuff, but maybe your federal aid road that is open well and that way have some drifting. And you could have maybe a lesser talented person than blade operator that could drive a truck and go out and, and just blow off the shoulders and some of this. So do you think that'd be valuable?
Well, I know some counties use truck, highway trucks to plow the ground roads and they put V-plows on the front of them and a wing, that's what it is.
And then, well, the nice part too is we had always maybe talked about a tandem axle dump truck for like small coffer jobs and stuff too. Do you think that's something maybe we could utilize? And then we could, you know, you could bring on someone who's less skilled, like somebody who obviously like farmer type truck driver knows what they're doing, but they probably can't run a motor grader, maybe, maybe fit in one of their trucks, do you think that has some value?
Yeah, I believe we could. I'm looking into different options though. This is, this is.
I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Dorsal snow events, so I mean, we're just trying to cross off everything we can. I mean, there's, there's different equipment out there that helps plow snow faster and more efficiently.
I just know when it was brought to my attention, I thought, that's kind of a reasonable thing to do. And then if you could utilize it in the summer as a dump truck, then that, at least you're not buying an equipment specifically for a rough winter. You can utilize it year round. And then you could put someone, like you said, who's not a blade operator in there.
Yeah, but there's more to plow snow than just being played up.
Well, no, but, I mean, but.
Those snows are still, you get that.
Right, but there are skilled people in this county that have ran motor grader that can, that could run plow trucks. I mean, there's people that we could bring.
Well, I'm not saying they're probably.
Right, I'm just saying that would probably.
That's what they would even look, look for, look at too.
You think that's.
And we have some extra funds out there that we can probably purchase something.
Well, I just thought when that idea was brought to me, I thought that was a pretty good idea to just be an all hands on deck approach. You can find, more likely find someone that could drive a plow truck than say a motor grader. That's why I just.
Yeah, I mean, and, I mean, everything's super expensive now.
Well, that's the thing. You're paying King's ransom right now for anything that could move snow.
We've been looking at dump trucks or end dumps for a while now. But you can't follow one that, I mean, you can't come here and justify spending.
Right. But do you think you could utilize that on gravel road? You think that would be okay?
To a certain extent, yes, you probably could.
That was the only question I had, cause I know we're built more for pavement. You hate to throw all your gravel in the ditch too, which is.
Well, it's not so much as you throw your gravel in the ditch, it's, the gravel's hard on everything underneath. There are air tanks, hoses, I mean, that just gets sand blasted. I know other counties use them and they run into the same problems. They get a truck and a year later, it looks like it went through a sandstorm in the desert, cause it just.
We got two more graders out there, a brand new one. You can come look at their wing posts and they're sandblasted, just, that's how much gravel there is, oh, well, it's around. It's harder, it's hard on, snow removal's hard on, but hands down.
And there's little to no return on investment, so again, basically makes money. That's right.
So there's one other thing prior, I guess we should bring up. Culverts on ADA Street, remember we were pumping water on ADA Street there? That's who, uh, mid, right away in the beginning of November, we finally were able to find those culverts. They're super short, and we can't, we couldn't leave them open, because there was a giant hole right next to the road. We don't have the resources to replace those culvert or even add on to it, because they're, they're constantly sitting in water. Now, I don't know if we want to go ahead and have Wold draw something up and see if we can get some contractors to come out. I don't, you know, there's different funding coming up for that. Plus that road is also too narrow, like that's why those object markers are up, it's I think a foot and a half too narrow. So I don't know if we want to bundle it all into one big project, or if we just want to try to get the culverts extended and get them open so the water flows right. Because with all this snow, I mean, what comes after snow is water and.
Can a guy just put equalizers in it or not?
What was that overlooked when those roads were built?
No.
By the superintendents in place and never extended these culverts out like they initially should have? Before they put the slope on the roads?
No, we did an emergency grade raise on that, because those roads were going underwater two springs ago. And that was, when you do an emergency grade raise, you're, you're all about just raising the grade so it can be driven on them. The width of it really doesn't matter, but then once you get out of that emergency, the option we had was to either take that lift out and return it to the width that it was, which nobody wanted to lower the road right after it flooded, or to leave those, those safety infrastructure in, in the sides and leave it narrow. That's what, and when it got narrowed, that road, that water was so bad, it was kind of like the hell with the culverts, build the road up. Well, now that the water's, you know, trying to equalize in a little more normal spot, I mean, we, they built over the culverts. It was, the culverts was, it was an emergency situation, they built over the culverts, now we're dealing with.
They built over the culverts and never extended the culverts?
Basically, yeah, because.
Or colored up with, that was all.
When you, when you raised that road, it wasn't wide enough. It didn't, typically if you'd raised the road, you'd make it wide, you'd extend the culverts like we did at Rice Lake the right way. In an emergency situation, the culverts didn't matter to save the road, and now we're dealing with that issue now, so.
Well, that was the intent when you initially built it, to redo those two lifts, correct? Out by Gethrow, by Sean Bergen, and the one by Forty Mountain.
Right, those were the emergency grade raises, yes.
But why wouldn't they place culverts for the finished job?
Because you couldn't expand them if everything was underwater, that was the point. The road was underwater and everything, we just built on top of the road to get it a raise, you know? So now, right. Well, trying to get that water to go, well, I mean, that, but the reason why the short culverts are in there is because we raised the road without extending the culverts, because it was an emergency.
So what are you doing now?
Well, that's where you have to, you know.
Because it's gonna be a nightmare on that same lake. All that water's gonna go back to the north, and one guy said it flows north, he said, no, it comes in and it flows south and it stays there.
Well, remember earlier when we said you addressed summer problems in the winter? Which we're addressing right now.
Well, that's what I'm like, and the point is, is we didn't address the culvert, because we needed the road. Now that the road is a little bit under control, now it's like, okay, now you gotta go back and think about them culverts. But the other trouble too is, is we might add, have to worry so much about them culverts. If the water was as high as it is with the snow pack, we might be back to, I mean, that road might be just high enough now on the culverts, I don't, you know? I mean, right, you've got to think of something, but that's the reason why the culverts were overlooked, is returning a federal grade raise. You just raised the road, and the heck with the culvert, you sort it out later.
But it wasn't even posted where they were at, was it?
No, we, old engineering had some.
Blueprints?
Blueprints from when it was initially built in the sixties, fifty, eighty, sixties. So we tried to find them, we pumped them down, think we could throttle steam, and we spent a month and a half pumping that water, which we, we never did get charged for that pump. So next time we see someone from Burwick County, let them know that they didn't charge us for that pump. The only expense we had to doubt was our own fuel and manpower, just checking on it. And we couldn't see them, so then we had, they gave us a rough idea where they'd be at, so we tried to measure them off. And then they actually come down with their GPS and tried to find them. And then we, they could give us kind of a rough idea where they were at, and then we dug down and pounded top, I believe two of them.
What's in the two culverts?
Well, there's actually three, and then there's two side by side, then there's one further to the, to the west.
Leonard would hope his Leonard lives, they're easing on that.
They're like five footers in there, I think, right?
And there's some big concrete ones in there. That's what they, that's what the operator found. Since then, we, we made a hole and extended it to the top, so we know where the ends are at.
So they opened them?
No, we had to close them back up, because they're so short that if we would have left them open, it would have been a pretty big hole right next to the road. And for safety of travel, we couldn't leave them open, so.
So you could not get a contractor in the light now and reach out with excavators and go down there and extend these culverts?
Oh, you gotta extend them in water.
I know, I don't know.
Well, that's, we don't have the resources for, so I mean.
We aren't gonna do it, no.
So that's, do we want to have Wold look into it, different alternatives, or what we can do? I mean, this is.
Well, I think you're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Do we want to see if they can just put a bid package together to extend those culverts, replace them, put equalizers in place?
Well, I think you'd have to probably have a variety of options and costs and, and you know, with timelines. So yeah, I think that'd be the right way to do it, because more than likely, if you're gonna replace them or even add on them, you're probably gonna have to do some kind of a coffer dam or, you know, weave out the water, that's a serious project for me to stand. Well, that's what I'm saying, those are people who know what they're doing, hold up, so we don't see, that's why you don't sit here and figure it out. You get the guys in, they know how to do it, so.
We sit here and second guess it.
That's right, you know, you call the pros. So yeah, I would say get ahold of Wold, ask them if they got any experience with that, if they can put some kind of variety of ideas together, so we can assess what we want to spend. And, you know, if it's a six month project or a six day project and figure it out, so.
That's federally subsidized, what, eighty percent on the federal?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, some of this stuff is different, I don't know.
Yeah.
About anymore.
Well, you'd have to check into it, like I said, you gotta contact people, I know probably Mary Sanger, get ahold of her, see what the, the status is. Wold probably knows, they were, they were the ones that worked on that federal grade raise, so they probably do know, you know, what are the alternatives, so.
I think for the time being, I think we should just have Wold look into ideas or alternative solutions, and then before we move on, and then we have to look into.
Well, Wold's gonna look into that. I mean, they'll figure out cost share, that's part of their job, dude. So they're gonna figure out if there's any federal cost shares with it, they're gonna figure out alternatives, and then we'll make a decision. So yeah, I would say get ahold of Wold and see if they can come up with alternatives for us.
Okay, let's move forward with that. Other than that, I don't believe we have, as the road department, I don't think we have much else.
Yeah, so I guess the other issue is your probation period ended December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Have you moved down here?
No, I just have to sign some paperwork, I found a place to rent down here, so I'm gonna sit and let, and I just got a time to sign a dog for the first year, so.
She'll be dogged if I went after the, end of the month.
Like, yeah, or probably, but um.
Then you're done, we're done with fruition of pickup and gas going back and forth, a business worker, no?
We never finished that pickup, that, that was all, every time that that pickup has left this county is for counties like.
Should you never go in and back and forth?
Oh, I drove a bag and forth a lot, but I also picked up a lot of parts from Butler and oils from Senex. And every time that pickup's left here, it's been for parts or services.
You have to go up to state, or state home and just pick up.
Yeah, I just pick up parts, which is to send somebody driving down here, then turn around and send someone right back up there. Like, yeah, like whoever stated that that pickup left for gravel sample, oh, sorry, that's another thing I have to bring up, but gravel samples. We have to sample gravel every, every day and take up there and drop off. I mean, you want me to do that in my private vehicle? Not gonna happen, so.
That reminds me, how are they doing out there?
Yeah, I forgot, that's the, I looked.
Well, let's handle the probation situation first, then we can carry on to something else. So are we gonna extend the probation, are we losing two to it, or is there, are we going to relieve those probation? I mean, with him renting a place here, I guess, I don't know, I that's, I guess I don't know if I see a problem with that being an issue, so.
Why was it extended?
Well, because.
I don't know what history.
The one issue that we had always had is we had wanted him to commit to this county. I mean, do I expect him to totally move down here? I don't know if that's an expectation, but if he's gonna rent a place and, and stay down here at least when he really needs to and stuff. I mean, I don't know if, I think that's probably enough in my mind. I'll say one thing, every time I contacted Skylar when there were snow events coming, and it was like, hey, what's the plan? Skylar's either rented a hotel room, or, I mean, he slept in the Hazelton shop a couple nights till there was no power in Hazelton. I didn't expect him to sit there in the dark, I mean, he's committed himself. Everything that you were afraid of with a guy that didn't live in the county, not being able to get down here and service, he's, he's blown past all those expectations. He's always been here when we needed him. He's, I mean, he's opened the Hazelton route, I, I drive by there when I go to my shop, he always beats me to Hazelton, and he's usually working when I drive home. He's, he's exceeded everything when it comes to that, I, you know? The only issue I would bring up is we had the David Crumb scenario, and then they all was at a short thought and, you know, something, but I guess.
He reprimanded all that, reached, I don't know, I don't know.
Right, well, that was, I mean, there was a letter that we're gonna put in his folder or whatever, I guess I, I was gonna do that for him, David Crumb. When David Crumb resigned, and we had all this weather, I didn't complete the letter.
So there's nothing else from?
Well, but I mean, it's in the record, I mean, it's on his record, I mean, if the papers are in there that I got. I was gonna rely on Joe for that too, but with the weather and everything, the courthouse is closed, things like that. But that being said, I, I mean, is that enough to keep him on probation? That's up to us, so if you guys, what do you think?
I think we should take him off.
I mean, that's. Any input is?
No, as far as I'm concerned, he's doing a good job. I talked to him on the phone, and it's kind of hard to get ahold of him once in a while. But I don't think he, he's ever got into something that, that he shouldn't have. Just about everybody you talk to seems to think that what happened to the old guy, they, he's gone, of course, then. Skylar took over, I can usually count on him. Wouldn't hurt if they were a little faster, but you can't act on all these at once, so. We, I for one, on the commissioners, I don't know how they feel, but he's done a good job with whatever I've had. And that's quite a bit, because I go there for a while, I called him every morning. Amen.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, well, if that's the case, then I would entertain a motion to either remove Skylar's probation or continue it. That's probably the only two options, so. Commissioner Beverly makes a motion to remove Skylar Perlwitz from probation effective January second, no, January third, that's today, so. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Any more discussion on probation for Skylar Perlwitz? Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we give him the three percent that, effective January third?
Yeah, I don't see why not, I guess he's an employee just like everybody else in the county. I guess I, I don't have, I mean, if he's off probation, he's doing a good job, I don't see no reason why, he would have been included with everybody else, you know, so.
I just need to know.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but I, I agree, I think that's fine, so. All right, every motion in a second. All those in favor of removing Skylar from probation signify the saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Probation is clear.
Thank you.
I for one, think you've been doing a very good job. There's always mistakes that get made, but I think in the situation we had, with the weather we had, it felt like you were doing pretty good. As long as we're continuing to grow and get better, I don't see any problem with the way you're.
Well, nobody's ever gonna agree on.
No, but I think, I think literally all, you've done a good job.
Hey, on that subdivision down there, but hey, by Dennis Hummel, do you know what the rules are on that is?
Yeah, we looked into it, they have a signed agreement, did they not, Marles, did we not bring it up?
What was that?
Agreement by Dennis Hummel, uh, his grandson wants to see the minutes where that was recorded, that Dennis swears up and down that we're liable.
You come into my office and I'll give you a copy of the deed, because we have copy of the deed up here.
I believe it's right on the plaque, actually, I don't know, Josh, Josh would know.
First, we moved into snow and laid that road, that is.
No, there's, there is an agreement, we, we are not liable for any.
I don't, it's private, it's all his own.
Right, no, I.
Dennis swears that we know.
Agreed upon.
Agreed upon moving the snow.
You can do it all.
The only thing we made Dennis do is make the roads, the ditches meet the county specs.
Did you agree upon Carty?
Cars has the same agreement, once you get out of like the section line, you're all safe. And I believe, I do believe there's a clause, I think if they requested it, we knew it would have, kind of like what we've been talking about today. Like if he would call and go, hey, come in and do it, send me a bill, I think we could do that, that's spelled out on the plaque, I believe, but we are not liable to.
Stop in my office before you leave, I have a copy.
It's spelled out in there.
And what do you do, excuse me, what do you do with Cattail, Beaver Bay, those developments? Do you go in with a blade and open that, or?
Well.
That's considered private?
Not the main, that main road is a section, like when you come on that long line trail or perched trail, the grade when you come in.
The Cattail?
The Cattail, or, and then that first, the main turn going in, that is on a section.
To the south?
Yes.
Okay.
Going up to like the hill in that house on stilts. Once that turns again, though, then I didn't believe that's private driving, we got to pump it, technically, because that's, that is a section line. I think that's like Fifth Street, Fifth Avenue Southwest or something.
So Beaver Bay on the south side of the bay, that road that they built up that he rode's.
Yeah.
That's not a county road to be maintained, is it?
We only maintain the one going in there.
Okay, that's other.
And the reason we made.
The guy's got a lot of tone being thrown at the guys here, and I just wanted to know.
That's an agreement that if that's their road.
The main Beaver Bay road, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we did, trying to push it on.
Yeah, the main Beaver Bay road is actually ours, because it came back on taxes, and that's why we go in as far as we do on that, that motor.
They've been coming to us all the time, saying someone's gonna be killed, that's how we.
So I guess, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
You know, obviously my salary is based off so many hours, right? Like, what if, we never really did discuss the, how many hours a year I'm supposed to put in, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure.
Because I mean, the only cheaper rate than minimum wage is someone that's on salary. I mean, when the courthouse closes or for stuff like that, I don't get anything extra for that.
Yeah.
I put in a lot of hours, I'm compensated for that. I'm fine, I mean, that's part of the job, I mean, a gift hour, but I'm not here to work for free either, which nobody should, so.
Well, I think with you commanding a route, because we're in shorthand, it definitely is, yeah, that's asking a lot too, though, so I mean.
I mean, yeah, and I mean, that's part of the job description and job title, and that's part of my just dedication, I guess, if you want to call it. Like, that's just what needs to be done, that's what good, good leaders do, is they jump in when people need help.
Yeah, you're gonna be putting in more hours, and then sometimes you're putting in less. So I, I mean, me, that's just part of the, being charged is part of the job when you have a salary job. I, I had it before, and I didn't agree with the deal all the time, but that's just part.
Well, I know, we can, we can hash something out, though, like, I mean, there wasn't very many Fridays that I took off this summer, so those are all donated hours.
You would think this year too, with the snow emergency, with all the snow, I mean, it's not a typical year either.
And I'm open for suggestions, I'm not demanding anything, I'm just trying to get some, I mean, obviously, that hasn't been. It hasn't been set stone before, so like, we need to start drafting these policies, so they get put in stone, so.
I, I think for the short term especially, what you need to do is on these stretches where things are maybe a little bit clear out, is you probably need to start managing your schedule to get out of here a little bit earlier and things too. Like, and what I mean by that is by delegating some other work to the guys that are hourly, like, not that expecting you to just jump ship. But there's no reason, like some of these, if the sun's shining on a Friday and things are kind of decent, then you can probably delegate some stuff to these guys. I mean, I'm not saying just take off and jump ship, but there is times when, since your salary, you can probably delegate some of that schedule, so you're not here all the time, all of you. Because if you don't delegate and create other roles of leadership, so these guys can take over when you're not around, then you'll always have to manage that too. That's part of being in your spot too, I mean.
Well, I agree, but I mean, I think that the guys can handle a lot, but when you're down people, you can't just abandon ship and then like, well, you guys get it done if you get it done. But I mean, we spent all summer shorthanded, I mean, where you think all that extra, I mean, there are a lot of times where I was in the mud just as much as the next guy. Which that's part of what it is, but I mean, let's get realistic.
Yeah, I mean, we can look into some alter, I mean, if there's other counties doing something different, maybe there's something we can look into now. But I mean, at the same time too, I mean, that's, you know, part of your responsibility is to delegate your own schedule too. And there's times when, when if you need to get off or you need to take off, that, you need to leave others in those kinds of positions where you can do that stuff. So you're not working sixty-five hours a week when the rest of the guys are too all the time. I mean, I'm not, I'm not telling you to just abandon ship when you hit a certain hours or anything, but, but yeah, I mean, I mean, going forward too, you'll have to probably manage your schedule a little bit differently too on some of those things. I know we're shorthanded, you did a great job filling in, and that's not a long-term solution neither though. I mean, that's short-term through this weather, hopefully you get some guys that are replacing it, you can start going to more of a typical type situation too, where you're, you know, running a, maybe a more typical schedule, you know? I think that's kind of the expectation too, I'm not, not writing off what you're saying, but also at the same time, I mean, some of that salary is kind of built in for the extra responsibilities at times too. It might not be completely equitable to what you're thinking, but that is part of the intended salary too, so. So that's kind of, you're gonna be working way more than you should. So that's kind of, you're gonna be working way more than you should sometimes, and sometimes you need to delegate so you can get out of there too, and.
Well, I don't think it's so much a delegate. I mean, I think I delegated pretty, pretty well. I mean, we have a good group of guys, but I mean, that's just, sometimes you can't delegate.
Right, I'm not criticizing whether or not.
But I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not. What I wanna get my point across is we should have a set. Set rules or set regulations, set some, a policy of some sort.
Yeah.
Because we're just flying in the wind here.
As far as you mean your expected hours or something?
Well, that, and I mean, yeah, I mean, I can't. A normal. Usually a normal salary is based off of twenty-eight. That's a forty-hour work week, fifty-two weeks a year. It's twenty-eight, right? Well, I shouldn't be putting in three thousand hours and still getting paid for twenty-eight. That's just unrealistic too. Not saying I put in that many, but that's what hap, like, if we don't have a policy set in place. We could, that could happen. If, if I wanna work one day a week.
Yeah.
I could work one day a week. Is that fair to the? For my salary? No, but it is no, there's no guidelines there. There's no set schedule, there's no set hours that should be worked. So it's not just for me, it's for the, the county too, as the board members, like, there's nothing in there saying I have to work forty hours a work week.
Skyler, you do know that you're an exempt employee, right?
Well, yes, I understand that, but that's, I mean, there's still regulations to being an exempt employee, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not just fighting for myself, I mean. Like I said.
Because you take like the sheriff who's exempt also, he's shorted out too. He puts in the extra hour. That's all comes with the job when you're exempt.
Well, I get that, but I'm saying that it should be, we should just have a policy. I'm not complaining, like, I wanna get just to the point that I'm not saying. I'm just saying. And this county's got a history of not having policies in place. We need to start these.
Mm-hmm.
So. If I leave in thirty years, the next guy or something happens, the next board of commissioners. Want to change, start changing things. It's gotta be voted on. There's no set rules. So I mean, a decision does not have to be made today.
Yeah.
It's just to. Put everybody, put it in their, in their view. That's all I'm saying.
Sure. Well, no, I understand where you're coming from. Like you said, you're, you're. You don't know exactly what even you're expected on versus what you're doing. Are you going way over the top? Are you doing it right? And so that's where. Probably just need to, you know, take a look into it and see what is expected, and like you said, draft something that's. If what you're doing is what we expect, then that should probably be in a policy form too. If we expect you to work fifty-five hours a week, then that's the expectation. I understand where you're coming from with that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Right, yeah, you're.
Trying to get it out there. I mean, we have a DHR director, consult, utilize her.
Yeah.
Other counties, there's a lot of counties that have. Salary vote superintendents.
Sure.
Putting that out there.
Okay.
So it's.
Do you know of any counties that do have it written out that we could use as a guideline that you're speaking and using?
Well, I would check with your consultant, pay on binder. I would check with your consultant, pay on binder.
Yeah, I mean, just check with bands, see if, I mean, if what we're doing is perfectly normal, then I guess it's done. If there's a policy that needs to be drafted, we, we. Fair voted, then I guess we can check into that, see if there's something we wanna do, right? It's no harm to check it into it. I'm disagreeing, so.
Just put it in the G P U. So at gravel, I talked to. The plant operator for their, they are, and they're trying to start crushing again today. Figured they had about a hundred and thirty thousand yards on the ground. Sounds like they're gonna just complete our, get to our contract of a hundred and forty-five and then they're pulling out.
Okay.
Are they, is it gonna be empty then, or?
No, and that's the discussion we need to have with, because our, the contract said a hundred and forty-five plus reliance.
Right.
So, but doing the bad weather and just everything that they've dealt with up there, I mean, they're. Gonna be a long contract for them, so.
Well, I think the main, the main issue is they're gonna try and fulfill their contract to us, which at least we have, and then after that, I'm assuming they're gonna want a different contract, because they're probably. Moving backwards. Well, I mean, that's where, they're gonna fulfill their contracted obligation and it costs them too much money during this weather, and then I suppose this spring. I mean, I don't know, since they fulfilled the contract, I would assume they're not gonna probably continue on it, but I guess we'll have to wait and see what they say.
So, but, are they gonna pull out your stuff?
What's up there upon the hundred and forty? What about, what are they yours?
Some, some statistics saying they could be close to two hundred thousand yards. So, at a hundred and forty-five, I do not think it's gonna be mined out. I know earlier in this, when they got going and they, we kinda gave them a. Soft closing of hundreds of fifty-five, and figured if we got to a hundred and seventy-five and they were still, see what happened up there, we could either say, keep going, or that's enough. But what's with that plus or minus in there, there was nothing.
They're probably gonna be fortunate to hit our one forty mark, is basically what you're saying.
Just weather-wise.
Right, I mean, it's just.
I think the gravel's still in there, so I mean, we can open negotiations with them and.
Are they gonna pull out, though, their stuff? Or are they just quit, or what?
Well, I only talked to the, to the plant operator and he's just, he doesn't, he's not the final stage, so. The next option is to talk to the. Head guys and figure out what, what we wanna do, if they're gonna leave their equipment or if they got. So we want them to start back up. If there's a different contract they wanna do now, because they fulfilled. Once they hit a hundred and forty-five, they fulfilled their initial contract, if they were to take, so. Do you guys want me to start negotiating with them or figure out what their?
I would figure out what their goal is.
What their goal is?
If they, if we can do something for about the same price.
Well, I think we'd always agreed before, we had a pretty decent deal on that gravel, so if we could continue anything close to that contract, then I'd say probably continue. But if they wanna renegotiate, then I suppose we'd have to reevaluate what our budget's gonna hold, and. If they all of a sudden come back and it's double or something, we obviously probably, I mean, we're gonna have to think about it or at least figure out.
And then if they're gonna, if they fulfill this contract, do we wanna put it back out on bids?
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. There's a lot of things. The main thing is to fulfill the contract, and then I suppose find out if they're.
Legally, you have to put it out on bids because it's a government entity.
Well, this one might be a little bit different. The reason why I say that is because we're not actually crushing the gravel. Like, it's actually a deal with Ken Wobom, and we are a part of the deal with Ken, so. If Ken decides they wanna keep crushing and they're gonna work for Ken, then they don't wanna sell us in gravel more than other certain leaders. I mean, that. The whole deal was Ken Wobom's having. We got a pretty good deal by working together on that. If they wanna continue that, it's great for us. If they wanna pull out or Ken decides he wants to crush more, all of those, all of those things could come into play, so. So, yeah, the main thing is to fulfill the contract we signed, and I have to just evaluate what they wanna do. If they wanna keep working with us, we could, right? Do a new contract at the signature rates. If they don't wanna do that, they. Do a negotiation or do something else. I, I don't think we even have. The right to bring it crushing, because they're crushing it through Ken, but that means we actually did lease the property. We're leasing, we're buying the gravel and leasing the land under it because Ken wanted to look at it, so.
I thought they were understanding that we, they were gonna give us as much as we could take out of there, weren't they?
Well, I think if they, like, Skyler's, if the weather would have been good and they wanted to crush the whole pit out, I think they wanted some kind of commitment, but. They may not do that now that they're stopping. I think they planned on crushing all winter till they got to. The end of the pit and maybe pull their equipment out and be done. Now, if they gotta pull their crews up, they pull the equipment, any good questions we'll have to ask them. If they don't pull their equipment and they just come back in spring, it's probably a pretty favorable situation for us. If they pull their equipment and go to all their jobs, because they have commitments. Then, you know, they might not come back, and if they do, they're gonna want more money, and you have to reevaluate what we wanna do. We're probably gonna have to work with Ken, if he wanted to bring in more pressure and not just, I think we have that ready, because we have a good night at least.
I guess I, I don't know if they're up.
Yeah. Because they're a lot, that's our future, so we can make decisions now.
Okay, well, we'll talk to them. That's the, the status of the gravel question.
Okay, but we're at least gonna get our original contract at the month's plan.
Yeah, I believe so. They're fighting tooth and nail for the last fifteen thousand yards.
Right, but I mean, if their plan is to continue that, at least we know that's the status as we should get to our contract at the month.
They said don't. We couldn't put it in writing, but they, hopefully they were done by the end of the week.
Okay.
The way things are going, like, it could be another week after that.
Sure. Well, I don't know if the contract at the month.
No, if they were to shut down, I mean, you don't have a problem.
No, no, the, the main thing is that just so we have a status, if they're gonna be ten thousand yards short, then we just have a bill for ten thousand less gravel. It's not like we're committed to paying a specific amount of their pressure or not. I just wanted to know, like, if they're gonna at least get to our target, because, I mean, we need as much gravel in that area as we can get, so that's the big thing.
Well, that's the update. I will talk to them, and I'll just figure out, so a lot more at the next meeting or. Next month, or if you guys decide to call, especially me, or whatever you guys wanna do.
Okay.
But I think that, now, I believe that is everything we have.
All right. Has anybody got anything to add for Skyler? Anybody here for? Questions for that, or? Okay.
Great, it's all going good, I don't know. No, too much trouble.
Are you guys, I guess, we should probably, do you wanna look at those contracts after, like, during bills, or do you wanna sign them?
Well, I don't know if there's any. No, I suppose we should probably vote if we're gonna vote these contracts, but, but.
Sure, where you can move to.
Right.
So they know where they can, we all know.
Right, so the agreed upon rate for Russ Lawler's in here?
Two seventy-five.
Yep. Two seventy-five an hour and then a hundred and fifty an hour for mobilization, so.
And the other one's basically the same, correct?
It's a little cheaper, I think.
Well, their, their rate's a little cheaper, but their mobilization's a little, a little more, but.
I think they were one fifty, right? I recognize you said.
One fifty and two hundred.
Okay.
I mean.
But they, you think they can replace so much snow?
That's what everybody I've talked to claims.
That's what they say. I've never seen it, have you?
No, and I wanna bring that out to you guys. Once we get, if, if you guys approve this or whatever, if you guys would like to come out and watch it, so to see what they are. I mean, I'm, if you guys approve it, I'm also gonna contact a couple of different counties and probably the state, Ricky down at the state, and just let them come out and watch it, because. It's kind of a new thing, like, people, it's kind of new to the area, so.
You would over-guess?
I have no love on.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So, do you think we need those eight contracts?
I would. With this.
Just stop with the win on fall.
Whether it's to be a red.
Predictable, next month, next week.
The dates are on the back. Do you wanna look at Sunday or what's up if you wanna look?
There's no.
Okay.
I'd like a copy of. I would vote. I've got the one with Russ. I think he just gave me a copy of it initially, because he had a contract with one county. That I see. Who he had, Russ had, yeah, I see. I don't know what you guys have, but I see the one with more than.
Well, this is what we have.
So these are, these are both our contracts, right?
Yeah, nice centers out there.
Yeah, those were both made up by.
By Joe, so the state's attorney, okay, so we're, we're signing our own contracts, so it's everybody's fair.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay.
I believe Sundry Santa Gravel has their notarized due. They're part of the next one, so.
Yep, it is notarized.
They will have the. Right.
That mobilization, that can figure, that one fifty, I'm sure. It's kind of shared site.
We don't think so.
One sheet or two?
One for now. Like, if they're working as good as we can.
So what do you think we have as far as, there'll be a lot of this. Overall. What do you think, how many spots you think that we gotta meet the rest? Have you driven the routes overall?
I drove a few of them, but not a lot, I mean.
So you don't have it mapped out over all the county?
Well, the, the operators are doing that. Where they find like, the first one that brought it up was. Mister Holmes, now, he, he's got, I think. Twenty spots or so in his area that he's, we've got it mapped out.
Good.
Stuff like that. We're, we're now tracking these spots, like, we've made a spreadsheet so that. We have them all listed on there and how long it took them and stuff like that, so, because. After this, a snow emergency, and other people start declaring it, then. Everybody remembers FEMA, I'm sure, with all those frost boils.
Mm-hmm.
Paperwork, paperwork, paperwork is what happened with those, so we're trying to just get ahead. Nothing might come about this, but at least we've got it documented, so.
But a lot of that stuff can be denied also, correct? With FEMA, where it isn't done properly.
Correct, and that's.
So you can fall on your face hard.
That's where our office personnel shines.
That's predicted.
He, like, you know, I'm sure you guys, know or whatever, the county got reimbursed, what, close to a quarter of a million dollars? Because of the paperwork was.
Right, yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, the.
But I don't wanna start that. We, like, we're documenting them and we're.
Taking GPS coordinates and things like that with the phones or whatever?
Not right now, we're just.
But I mean, you have that capability.
We have that capability, we need to, so.
Just make sure you're doing whatever you need to.
And the thing is, is with these spots, you can always. You'll be able to tell exactly where they were at.
Right.
Frost boils or whatever, you fix the road. They disappear. Like, you fix it up to where you can't see them anymore. These, you'll always be able to see when those are pushed, snow backed, so.
Okay. Well, we have these two contracts.
I'll make a motion to accept both contracts.
Okay.
And, um, I guess, whatever long you think you need them.
Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna get them here and get them out.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure there's other counties that are wanting them too.
Yeah, the sooner, the sooner, you know, these guys.
They're better out there. I know, I know Sundry Santa Gravel, I know all them, and I know they like to work, like, they probably get a foot fifteen, sixteen-hour days in. Like, they're just, they move in and they move back out. That's the name of the game, that's what. When you're a contractor, that's what you should do, is. After you get stuff done, hurry back on the next.
So we have a, we have a. Motion to accept both contracts. Well, one from Sundry Santa Gravel on mine, and the other one for Russ Lawler Construction for those that work for. Yeah, it's no funds.
Okay.
Yep, I have a motion from Commissioner Holmes, and I'll second that motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Materi. Is there any more discussion? Um, I guess my suggestion is, is we might as well just find out, have a special meeting, at least maybe a week or two, because then we can evaluate what we're spending on the snow, and then we can also maybe come up with some ideas on some policies you wanna do. I don't have to make that decision right right now, but I think that's something to do, so we're not leaving Skyler hanging too, where it's like, how much should I do?
He doesn't deserve to stay hanging.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. Well, I mean, even with the, even with the cost of these dozers, how much do we wanna spend? We're, we're right, we gotta manage it, so I think, uh. You know, probably a reasonable expectation. Do you have a meeting in two weeks? Do you think two weeks is?
I think we should probably have a pretty good handle on it.
Pretty good idea, two weeks, so I mean, let's just kind of.
You think they could be down here this week? If you're getting these guys noticing mine, they'll be here this week.
I think they're chomping at the bit.
Are they? Okay. I know Russ is chomping at the bit.
Yeah, so I mean, the fastest week, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Off the top of, is Joe in today, or?
No, he's not, he's out sick, but, um, just for the sake of the question here, we have a motion and a second, so, um. All those in favor of approving the contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts approved. Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, Russ's, isn't notarized on the bottom? Can he bring that in and have it notarized in front of?
Not even signed yet, maybe.
Not even signed yet.
Well, I don't think Russ has signed it yet.
Didn't he?
He can.
I mean, this is signed.
I suppose I have to wait until it gets notarized too, then.
Oh, Marla's.
No, that's what I'm wondering, is Mark?
Do you have a show? I'll give you a show.
What did you say?
The Marla's notarized, your signature, parent, after. Do you need to, do we have, do we have somebody notarized?
I don't have my notary yet from the state. It'll be late for some reason, so.
Okay.
You can do it, right?
She did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you watching these so you can notarize? Is it, they're good enough?
Yep.
Okay.
So then, just, Lawler just has to come in and sign it and have it notarized.
I don't have it in my office, I'd say. And every, every office in the courthouse almost has one, so it doesn't have to be Joe's. If there's, there's, there's numbers.
Sign in a second. You good with that?
Yep.
Right, is that it then, Skyler?
I believe so, so.
You're gonna let us know? You're gonna let us, let us know?
To the blades.
Yeah, for the.
Yeah, send a, send a.
At the next meeting.
Send an email or something, or, yeah. Because you're gonna hire them probably within.
So, we can't just send out emails and text messages to every commissioner, because that becomes subject to open record laws, so.
Well, I think what we're gonna do here is let's just, uh.
I mean, if we're gonna meet in two weeks, they're probably just gonna start it in two weeks.
Well, no, but you'll at least know if you've offered and they've accepted in two weeks, right?
You can send out the notification information to the commissioners. It just can't be a decision through emails. I do have time.
She sends people a call, yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't make it big enough. Oh, anyway. Yeah, no, I don't think there's a problem with sending a notification email just to.
Okay, we will send one out, and yeah, I.[1766.92] Okay, we will send one up, and yeah, I heard, said we're going to interview tomorrow, and we'll, uh, see if they, someone, we'll, we'll probably try to make a job offer at least tomorrow.
Right, so you're going to make offers tomorrow, and hopefully you're going to hear back within a couple of days to a week, at the longest, probably.
Do you know anything about those guys? They got experience.
Someone do, someone, one guy does.
Well, I guess we'll find out what you find out, so, okay.
A lot of people need to be trained on their applications.
Okay, um, so for the sake of time here, since we are over lunch with the meetings on the stove, or the, the, there's only probably two. One thing is we have to amend the 2022 appropriations.
Yes. Okay, if you look at the, the sheet that I gave you guys, the top reports is the general fund. We did go over a couple of line items, but we didn't go over the general fund overall, so we don't have to go in there on that. But the bottom ones, the couple of them that we have to amend, the one I went with, the House Bill 1505. We didn't know we were getting the revenue here at the time we did the budget. And then, um, also the ARPA, that's not, you know, when we did the budget, we didn't appropriate anything for those, because we didn't know we were getting any money. But then after, you know, getting the money spent, we need to just, I just need a motion to amend those two funds appropriations, um, by the Dallas office.
We had funds that they weren't part of the funding, we're giving a motion.
We didn't know we were getting the funds.
Right, but now we have, oh, we didn't have us a part of the budgets, we have to amend the budget to appropriate.
Yeah, otherwise I.
Right, so. So Commissioner Everly makes a motion that we, uh, that we amend the 2022 appropriations to account for the, the, basically the unexpected funds of. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Commissioner Holmes, any more discussion on the appropriations amendments? Okay, not hearing any more discussion. All those in favor to amend the 22, 2022 appropriations, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then approved.
Do you guys want to see the applications, will you? Once they're applied, it's all by bracket, you want to see.
Cool, alright, yeah.
Okay, well, another quick thing here, I, I guess in my opinion, unless you guys change your mind, I think we should probably have a special meeting in two weeks. I think, I think we should item out the dosing situation, make sure we're not spending more than we wanted, or make sure we didn't, or if we need to bring in more, we can make that decision. So I think we can evaluate our dosing situation, and then also evaluate if we're even doing.
We can see, we can work together.
Right, if it, maybe it's working great, we can stop, maybe we need to bring in two more dozers, I don't know, we can make that decision, and so I think it's, I think it'd be pertinent, it's the third today. Should we just do the seventeenth, that's two weeks from now?
Might be called.
Oh, Wednesday.
Seventeenth?
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's Tuesday work for everybody?
Yeah.
We'll probably do it at nine AM, hopefully everything's good, we're done by eleven, ten thirty.
What's the date on that?
The seventeenth, it'll be two weeks from today.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah. Well, somebody's got an issue with that. So probably, probably have time, too, I guess, we have a case, and that's about short time. Okay, well, I think let's plan on having a special meeting on January seventeenth at nine AM. Go over a couple, so. So, I mean, if something comes up in the meantime, contact Marla's boss, she put on the agenda button. Let's keep it short, so we don't have a huge, big long meeting, let's take care of what you do, and get out of here.
And you guys, we did discuss one, or two, three, did I say?
Yeah, three's four, so you have to just make sure, whatever you're talking to, yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah. That's right. Okay, well, we have a special meeting, taking care of January seventeenth, nine AM, here, special meeting to discuss any pertinent information of the snow emergency, basically, so. That being said, those are all the items on the agenda, so just bills, give that bills, and let's just get out of here, then start taking lunch break.
So is there one way to know that there is one application that we had dropped off at the shop that's probably not in there?
There's another candidate that would have applied, but he just never thought there was, he was been dragging his feet, they could be a hell of a candidate for you, but that's in your discretion. And I'll talk to him, I can give you a call later, okay? And then applied, you met him, I'm serious.
Aaron, do you have that coming, do you know, the right best?
Marla says that. I guess technically with the notary, Amy. Amy, does it matter that I signed it on camera, is that? Like, right, so I'm just saying.
Here's the nine.
Security, so they can keep in.
No, we never, they're operating, but.
This is for those contracts, if you want.
I'm going to want copies.
Yeah, like, yeah, yeah, like, you guys, it was just a folder, yeah, like, you guys.
Got anything, or just check it out? Hey, no. Filling your patriotic duty, keeping an eye on us, that's good.
Hold it all very soon.
Yeah.
So it was maybe one percent.
That's still coming.
It'll be your experience. Probably, yeah.
Yes, I thought maybe a lot of times it's clear that, right, you're in the world, it's still.
So we have to look at these, we have to sign these.
If Jeremy signs, then I sign them.
Okay.
If you're ready to look at them.
Yeah, you can, if, if, you know, I just, the two is look at, if you have a question or don't know, you can, you know, then you'll look at it, but most of the time, I just kind of, they serve to like, write them like this, you know, yeah. They buy all their fuel from Martin, why don't I take a dinner? Oh, they're pricing up, oh, because I've seen it.
They, they do. There's no bits that submitted in most competitive gigs.
No, it's just kind of up here.
Okay, I didn't, I saw that, that's what they did. So they're pretty much assured they're going to get fuel.
I think John falls in on the price this time.
Whatever happened up in the Azov, they finished that job, that cement that they were going to cut out.
Oh, and that shop that they bought?
I don't remember, did they buy, or they moved a wall, or they had to move it for a stool, or a wall?
I think you guys approved it last month, I don't think they're going to do it again.
He's never done?
I don't think so. And you can ask him. Let's see, what date is January seventeenth, is that Tuesday?
Seventeenth? Um, I think, yeah. Tuesday.
That date sounds really, I'm. Maybe it's just, why don't you, it's all, that's like.
Yeah, I did that up there, weird.
Yeah, I have to tell him, we had to change that. That's, this is for, you know. So Dan, you get a lot of complaints that we closed our lunch?
I had a lot of, and a lot of good, healthy complaints, not that they were irrational, it's, you bring it up to me, please. And I just said, you know, I just feel, I said, it's a power of the deputy, the courthouse, I agree with you, I said, it shouldn't be open to business. That's all I said, I said, I'm, you know, that's my opinion, and I don't know what the other guys feel.
Sometimes I'll just run down and go quick or something.
I just, I don't know if that's my opinion.
My worst fear is like, sometimes someone from Haynes Brad comes in, wants to open a door, it's like, I don't know.
I really think it should be.
You want that, or? You want that, or?
So we adjourned.
Within this building, it doesn't suit anyone.
I can put them in if you're in.
Ah, don't put them in, Dave, just, just kind of, you know.
You got to sign them?
Yep, I got to sign them, so.
Yeah, I got a question, are we satisfied with John signing, you know, funny time sheet? Or is Skyler be signing on?
Skyler needs to sign them.
Are they both signing?
Your super, you should sign those.
Did I thought Skyler did sign them? He's going to be signing them.
They're not signed by the sheriff.
They don't have John's initials, they're not. Well, I would say, you know, them, them only John's, you know, I think Skyler better know it.
No, the process was to have two initials on there, so.
Yeah, they're not on any, they, in fact, there's two that aren't even, uh, initial John's, and, uh, Carl, I'm not sure.
There's not an initial, but John did?
Nothing.
And sometimes there's an issue, there are no John, and that's why it's silent, there was something that wasn't present.
Yeah, they, I don't know what they did, what they did on the other ones, due much before they were, it was nothing.
Are they both, they signed, they're signed by both of them, other than just like one or two?
No.
Two of them aren't, yeah, no one mentioned that at all.
Okay.
Skyler didn't sign any of them.
Okay, I'll call them.
Doesn't work. Yeah. And it's not the good sir, or, that's not the weird issue.
Okay, good, thanks. Uh, normally we have a signing, but Skyler put down on the right, he wasn't having a chance, I mean, I don't think we have to.
So, do we prove them?
You didn't, we're going to make sure they sign them, that's good.
Yeah, cause there's none of those are, how about our Dell, who signed it?
Well, it's still on here, so.
I initially.
Okay, there.
I will.
Oh, you will, that's, oh, okay, so D Care. Yeah, D Care are just good, I just feel like.
Okay, so right when I fill out the paperwork, I'll just sign it to take money out, everything needs two signatures.
Just for your sake.
She should say she's signed it, too.
Yeah, I know, but it just.
Like on all of our checks.
It's always wrong, you always point.
Yeah, like on our checks, it's Lisa and I that sign them, for some reason I would get sick and end up in the hospital, whatever, and then Jordan even signed it.
Yep, yep.
No, I agree.
Who's Mary Sager?
She's a.
Emergency manager. Emergency manager.
And Ann Wyler is your HR lady, that is not, for who? For everybody within the entity of Emmens County?
Just. Just us, and that was, just here, just everyone.
Emmens County employees.
Yeah, and she, she also contacts the Burley County, too, right?
She's the Burley County HR, and we consulted with her.
So the employees, the county.
Well, the employees, the employees can't, and that's who's calling her, it's just the commissioner and department.
Okay, okay. Lady will have one as far as training with her.
Well, it started out with some employees of the column, she was getting pretty overwhelmed, and she says, this is more than I thought I'd be able to do.
She used to be with the state.
Oh, really?
I think years ago.
No, but yeah, you can just keep, whatever you're done with, just keep pushing, I'll make a. I think Dan, Dan or Don might have them or Marcy there, I don't know yet.
Mary Sager did, we had some good, she taught, she.
Time, you got the time sheets?
Yeah, they're not, yeah. Here you go. That's which, Skyler, that's which, Skyler.
Well, I know, well, we usually, we do this all.
That's your baby, that's his baby.
Yeah, I think, it's been a hectic, yeah, thing sometimes, I mean, this new system we're hoping to have up in, in later this week, with a trial basis.
And where's it going to be at, like, by the time?
Yeah.
So then you don't have to chase through the local.
Shouldn't have. Should just be able to look at it online and go through it and.
Everybody has to chase through the covers and.
Shouldn't have, and you have to look at it, scan it, and finish.
So one more abatement, so we'll wait for Gary to come in.
What's that?
So one more abatement that came in right at the end, but. Yeah, well, here we got a form, let's just do it some recent in there. Is that all bills?
Yeah.
Damn, okay, well, uh, one other thing that came in right at the last second was another abatement, it looks like it's one of them blind exemption, it got, it was previously a homestead credit, now got to a blind exemption, which basically, it doesn't even look like it changes the value, so it must have qualified, they had it over here, and it just became this, it's just a change of. It's the type of exemption or abatement they get, it really didn't change any valuation or nothing, so, uh, everything's okay, right, Marla, I mean, Denise brought it to you, so it's all.
Denise brought it in.
Okay, so I guess it, take a motion to approve table or deny?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Everly makes the motion to approve the abatement, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, seconded by Commissioner Materi, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, opposed, abatement approved, motion to adjourn, the bills are done. Entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Colby makes a motion to adjourn, can I say? Adjourn, go ahead.